Good evening, I'd like to call to order this special town council meeting. This is Tuesday, June 2nd, 2020. Please rise for a moment of silence. We'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, you ready?
Yes.
Fishbein?
Here.
Laffin?
Here.
Marone? I can see you Joe, but I didn't hear you. I'll put you here, but your audio isn't working Joe. Morganstein?
Here.
Chertelle? Is Chertelle here?
Not yet.
Okay, thank you. Do you hear that noise? Okay. Tada?
I can't figure out where it's coming from.
Here.
Testa? No Testa?
Not yet.
Zandry?
Here.
Chairman Savoni?
Here.
But give me, give me one more second. Mayor Dickinson?
Here.
Jimboz?
Regent.
And could I ask, are there more than one town attorney on the call, or is there?
I'm here also.
Jerry Carl, Jerry.
And Janice. And Janice Small, okay, thank you very much. I'm all set, thank you Chairman.
All right, before we go into the business on the agenda. Just. Before we go into the business on the agenda, I'm just going to read an announcement about how these meetings run. Members of the public, please keep all of your microphones muted during the meeting unless you're the person asking a question. Also kindly keep your camera inactive unless you're speaking. This system does not deal well with multiple simultaneous speakers. The audio from only one person will come through at a time. Therefore, please only speak if you have been recognized. I do not have a traditional wooden gavel with me at my workstation. I don't need one. As the meeting organizer, I have a mute all button, as does my vice chairman, Mr. Laffin. If people aren't participating respectfully, I'll be forced to mute all so the person who has the floor can be heard. I'll now proceed to go through the agenda. If you wish to, please comment on a particular item on the agenda, please type in the chat bar. If you look to the, to one corner of your screen, you should see a speech bubble icon. If you click on that icon, it will allow you to enter a message that I will see and know that you'll want to speak. I will first look for questions from members of the public who are using a computer or smartphone app to participate. Once I've heard from all logged in digitally, I will then see comments from those who have dialed in. And very importantly, if you are a member of the public wishing to comment, you must introduce yourself by stating your name and your address. Thank you. With that.
Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Marone?
Yeah, I would like to make a motion to waive Rule 5 and to present a motion at this meeting regarding the censure of Counselor Fishbein.
I don't believe the motion's appropriate. Rule 5 speaks directly to regular town council meetings and setting the agenda for regular town council meetings. So that, that's where Rule 5 does apply. And just for the benefit of the public listening, my response to Counselor Marone's motion does not speak to the substance of the motion. I want to speak carefully. It is not an endorsement of Counselor Fishbein's actions which Counselor Marone seeks to address. It is merely my effort as the chairman to run an orderly meeting in accordance with the rules. That being said, I do believe that the motion is out of order. And as of this time, I don't hear a second.
Second.
Madam Clerk, did you get the second?
Yeah. I believe it was Laffin, I'm sorry.
That's correct.
I apologize, thank you.
It was. And again, even though the motion is seconded, under our rules, I don't believe it's an appropriate motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
In, in support of my motion, I think that the issue that we're discussing is, is extremely time sensitive. And the fact that we're here tonight, I would, I would just appeal to your, to your sense of expedience that we could have this done tonight and not wait a whole week to bring it to a regular meeting.
Okay. Any other comments from the council? Counselor Morganstein, is that an indication that you'd like to speak?
That is, I'm sorry, yeah. My understanding was that Attorney Small had been talked with from some other members of the council. And I did not think it was indicated that it was out of order. I could be wrong on that, but as we were, a couple of people communicating today, that was my impression.
Well, Attorney Small is on this call and she can certainly speak for herself.
I did not, I don't recall addressing the waive Rule 5, that's part of your rules. I indicated that it was a problem under FOI because it's a special meeting, that was my point. I do appreciate that, the time sensitivity that the council may have with respect to this matter, but I did point out that under FOI, you're not supposed to add to a special meeting agenda.
I guess that's all I had to say.
All right. I don't see any other comment from the council. This is not a substantive motion or a motion to make a substantive decision, it's not an agenda item, I'm not going to go to the public. And so, Madam Clerk, on the motion to waive Rule 5, please call the roll.
Fishbein?
Mr. Chairman, I just, I have a procedural question. We're, we're voting on a motion that you ruled out of order. I am just trying to figure out where we are.
Well, that is a valid point. I did rule the motion out of order, and as I indicated earlier, it's, forgive me Counselor Fishbein, but it's not an endorsement of your actions. It's just that I do, don't believe that our rules allow a waive Rule 5 at a special meeting. If somebody cares to appeal the ruling of the chair, then I will entertain that.
Mr. Chairman, may I interrupt for one moment, please?
If you're appealing my ruling, you can.
I'm asking actually, I don't know what's going on, I apologize, I don't know how I lost everything, but I couldn't log in until a moment ago, so I don't really know what's going on right now.
On the table is a motion to waive Rule 5 made by Counselor Marone to address the censure of Counselor Fishbein.
Okay, that's a motion that's on the table?
Yes, it is. And it's been seconded by Counselor Laffin, but I believe it's out of order under our rules because waiving Rule 5 only applies to regular meeting agendas.
So what did you just call the vote on, then, if you're not allowing it?
Yeah, I don't understand that either.
Well, I'm backing off on that, and I'm, I asked if anybody wanted to appeal the ruling of the chair. Counselor Chertelle wishes to speak.
Okay, thank you for catching me up, I apologize for being late.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I too was late, I couldn't find the, the meeting login. So I apologize, I, I thank you for that summary, I guess. I was under the impression, though, that a majority of the counselors could change any rule at any time in those rules. Therefore, I do appeal the ruling.
Well, that's different. To, to change the rules, you have to call a meeting to change the rules. The, the issue right now is my ruling that the motion is out of order and it doesn't fit under Rule 5. So the question becomes, are you appealing the ruling of the chair?
I am, because I believe the only risk to us is that somebody will sue us for violating this in a special meeting, and I don't believe anybody is going to sue us for doing that. So yes, I'm appealing the ruling of the chair.
The suit to which Counselor Chertelle refers is a Freedom of Information Act complaint. The concern is that going forward on a improper motion like this one, issue that was not noticed under the agenda properly, doesn't comply with FOI, the lawsuit would be an FOI complaint, just for the benefit of those following along. So Counselor Chertelle has appealed my ruling, and is there a second to Counselor Chertelle's appeal?
Second.
I think I heard Zandry first and then Morganstein. All right, then. Madam Clerk, if you're following along, could you please call the roll on the appeal of the ruling of the chair?
Okay. So on the appeal of the chair, I'm just making myself a note quickly, I'm sorry.
That's all right, to clarify, a yes vote is to sustain Counselor Chertelle's appeal, and a no vote allows my ruling on the waive Rule 5 motion to stand.
Okay.
Fishbein gets to go first.
We can hear you Gina, Fishbein.
Mr. Chairman, I did indicate that I had commented, I believe this is a debatable situation, just if I may.
Sure, your comment would most appropriately be directed to the ruling of the chair.
Oh, I, I know. Directed to the ruling of the chair, yes, sir. So it appears that I would have some sort of interest in this particular vote, and therefore I don't feel comfortable voting on this particular vote, and therefore I'm going to abstain. I just wanted to, to make that known for the record, so thank you for allowing me to comment.
Thank you, your abstention is noted.
Laffin?
Yeah.
Marone?
Yes.
Morganstein?
Yes.
Chertelle?
Yes.
Tada?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Zandry?
Yes.
Chairman Savoni?
Well, being the chair, I vote no.
I would assume so.
But that being said, the next roll call is on the motion to waive Rule 5.
Okay. So Fishbein?
I sit here in the same quandary. Yes.
Laffin?
Yeah.
Marone?
Yes.
Morganstein?
Yes.
Chertelle?
Yes.
Tada?
Yes.
Testa?
Sorry, yes.
Zandry?
Yes.
Chairman Savoni?
Remaining consistent, I vote no.
Good guy. That motion passes.
All right, Counselor Marone, please make your motion.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Whereas our nation is, is in a time of great civil unrest and frightening government abuses of power, the Wallingford Town Council does not condone racially insensitive and inappropriate humor, nor do we condone the mocking of someone else's insensitive remarks with poorly chosen comments of our own. Specifically, the recent retweet by Town Councilor Craig Fishbein smacks of ignorance and a disgusting and inappropriate tone. Whereas Martin Luther King once said, "The ultimate measure of a person is not where one stands in moments of comfort and convenience, but where one stands in times of challenge and controversy." I move that this council censure Craig Fishbein for standing on the wrong side of challenge and controversy by spreading a backward and unsophisticated joke on social media. Further, as this language is inappropriate in any context, the council wishes to distance itself from these comments as an affront to good taste and an attack on the liberty of others, so moved.
Second.
Okay. Moved, Madam Clerk, did you get the second?
I got Gina as a second, and I'm going to ask Counselor Marone to email me that statement, please. I have my email up and running, you can send it right now.
All right, good.
Counselor Marone, I believe that your motion was well articulated, do you have anything further to add to it?
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'll let it stand as is.
Any further comments from the council? Counselor Laffin?
Just a question on the actual motion or censure, Counselor Marone. The first part, or in the second part anyway, you used the word joke and in the first part humor. Is, are both of those tied to the actual censure? Or, or just one? I'm not comfortable with the use of either. I would just ask that the word comment be replaced, or the word joke be replaced with comment or communication.
Um. Mr. Sheriff, I may? You may. So I used the word humor because I believe that that was the tone of Mr. Fishbein's tweet. I guess, as a friendly amendment, could we substitute it with the word comment? We could, but I think the, the word comment is less articulate than the word humor, which I believe was his intent. Again, not speaking on his behalf, but that was my impression.
So the, so is the, is the first part, part of the censure, I, I don't know, we've never done this before? Or is it just from the, the second part on when he motioned to the censure? Were those his comments, or?
I, I think that he gave a long preamble.
Okay.
And in the end, his motion was to censure. And I think.
Yeah, can I have, yeah, can I have the, from the, the motion, the censure on red back?
Certainly. "I move that the council censure Craig Fishbein for standing on the wrong side of challenge and controversy by spreading a backward and unsophisticated joke on social media. Further, as this language is inappropriate in any context, the council wishes to denounce itself from these comments as an affront to good taste and an attack on the liberty of others."
Yeah, I guess then I would just motion to amend the word joke to something else. I guess it's not a comment, because it wasn't his comment.
May I suggest you just replace it with retweet? Everybody knows.
Okay, I will accept retweet as a friendly amendment, Mr. Chairman.
That's fine, I just didn't want to, to tie it to the word joke.
Will the second.
I know it was his comment.
Will the seconder of the motion address the amendment?
I'll second it again, yes.
Thank you. Counselor Laffin, you still have the floor?
That's, that's it for right now.
Next comment I have is from Counselor Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, you know, I just wanted to be clear that I do not associate myself with the statement that was depicted in the meeting. That is certainly not my statement, it is not my feeling, it is not my position, it is not my belief. It was untimely, it was a mistake. It was a, it was a very bad mistake. I, I acknowledge that, and I will let you know, and I have shared with others, that right after it was retweeted, I did attempt to delete it. And I was unable to do that. Not knowing that if I go, go back to the page that it was retweeted from, I had to click on, on retweet to get there. It was posted on Saturday, I really didn't know the extent of what was going on, it was solely in the face of what I felt was a similar and unaddressed statement by the individual depicted in the meme. And I found that to be unfortunate. And my retweeting is unfortunate and wrong, I, I totally recognize that. There was nothing, when I couldn't delete it, I actually went on to other things. And there was no mention of it on Sunday. On Monday, I eventually was able to figure out how to delete it, but by then, you know, the things had happened. So, you know, I, I didn't do apologize for my wrong action, and you know, I, I think that's, that's all I can say, so thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, any other comments from the council? Dare I ask any comments from the public? I see none, any comments from anybody calling in on the telephone? And I have a request from Mr. Martin.
Thank you. I would just like to say that I don't think censure is good enough in this case. In the history of the United States, we have a long racial problem, and Wallingford has not been a shining example of dealing with the racial problems. We have a reputation as a town, which may be warranted or not, of having problems with race. And we need people in town government that understand that this reputation is a problem and are careful not to make it worse. So even if it's true, as the counselor said, that he said in his apologies that this was a mistake and bad judgment and careless, I don't want someone representing my town, on my town council, that had such bad judgment and could be so careless as to make the reputation of the town worse by spreading racist things on the internet in a time where we need to be more careful when dealing with the subject of race. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Morganstein.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Mr. Martin. So in my time on charter revision, Mr. Martin, my recollection is that this body really has no power on removal of anyone from office. I just wanted to be sure that you understand that. And it is worth noting that, at last look, I had done, nearly 2,000 people had signed a petition to that effect. And that is appreciated in support of the situation. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I just want to clarify that Counselor Morganstein, your perception is correct of our ability to remove an elected official. Next comment is from Jamie Hine. Mr. Hine, your microphone doesn't appear to be working, and I just want to remind anybody who wants to speak that, name and address for the record, please.
Is it working now?
Success.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Jamie Hine, 342 South Elm. My, my comment is, is this, I appreciate the motion. I think it is appropriate. I, you know, yesterday I was sitting in work and I started to get a bunch of texts referring to this retweet that I was unaware of at the time, and the tweets are, the texts just kept coming. And, you know, I, I've been here in town for about 13 years, and over the years, I've always been faced with comments about Wallingford and its history on, on race and race relations. And I've always defended Wallingford. And I've spent a lot of time doing that. I have some very close friends who are from out of state, and that's how they know Wallingford. They know Wallingford because of its race related, its history, race relations. This did not help. This tweet did not help, especially in the time that we're in. I just, and, and Counselor Fishbein, I respect you, I, I think you can speak to anybody as a Democrat. I spend a lot of time defending you and your positions on a lot of issues, believe it or not. But this, I, I just don't get it, and I don't get how this would have made any sense in any context. There is not a single context that I can think of where this would make any sense. And, and the idea, you know, just the idea that you were trying to make a point, you, it sounds to me like your explanation is that you believed Vice President Biden made a racist comment. And so your response, and it wasn't getting enough media attention, and so then your response was to retweet another racial or racist tweet? I mean, that, that doesn't make any sense to me, so the explanation doesn't make any sense. And because the explanation doesn't make sense, it's even more concerning to me that that was retweeted. You know, it's just, it just makes, makes my job tougher when I have to defend Wallingford and tell people how great a town it is. And it's frustrating that it's my representative who is making my job tougher. who is making my job tougher. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And next in line, I have Counselor Fishbein.
Uh, just briefly, Mr. Chairman, I just, um, um, there was a mention of, of plural racist, um, posts. And I just wanted to be clear that, um, uh, the offensive and racist post was in the singular. Uh, I think I've already spoken to, uh, my, uh, wrongful reasons for posting, but I just want to make that clear because, um, one speaker did speak about in the plural. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Martin, uh, I have a note that you seek to clarify that you're asking Mr. Fishbein to resign. Did you have any more to say than that?
No, that is sufficient.
Thank you. Next up is Mr. Jack Beecher.
Hi, I'm Jack Beecher, 65 Cider Hill Road in Wallingford. I sent an email earlier, uh, to the entire council. I won't repeat that. But I, I take, uh, Representative and, uh, Counselor Fishbein at his word. And I'm not asking for his resignation. What I'm asking is that we now take this opportunity to figure out how to talk to each other. We all make mistakes.
Don't want someone representing my town.
May I continue?
Yeah, I've silenced the interruption.
Thank you. Um, I, in, in, in my note to Councilman Fishbein, I reminded him that he represented all of us and that I was embarrassed by his actions. But we all do make mistakes. And we cannot continue canceling people because they make mistakes. We have to, we have to teach ourselves and each other how to learn and how to talk to each other. And how to allow people to learn from those mistakes and adjust their thinking. I had a very unusual experience last fall. I was refereeing a soccer match in Milford, Connecticut. And met an old friend who was a coach of one of the teams and I knew him from Hampden where I grew up. And he said, "Where are you living now?" And I said, "I live in Walling." And he said to me, and I quote, "Oh, Whitingford." And I was embarrassed uh, because that's not, that's not the town that I want to live in, nor do I think it represents the best that our town has to offer. But I would, I, I would implore us all to take, take the moment. You represent all of us and this is going to be a very challenging time for many reasons. But people do make mistakes and, and my hope is that Councilman Fishbein will learn. I have to say personally, I, all my life I have, uh, I, I lived, uh, in communities that were multiracial. We shared a socioeconomic background that we would call poor. And uh, I didn't understand Black Lives Matter. I used to get a little bit angry. But now I think I'm beginning to understand it because it never entered my mind that they didn't matter. And I think our sensitivity has to come from our hearts and from, from the learning. So, uh, Councilman Fishbein, I accept you at your word. And I don't want you to resign. I hope that you'll take this lesson, not as a, not lesson. I hope you'll take the information, the input you're receiving and that you'll use the mind that you have to make us all better because I don't think that's where you really come from. Uh, and that's, I appreciate the work that all of you do and the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Uh, next up is, uh, Rajan Dhring.
Rajan Dhring of Sharon Drive. As Mr. Hine said, I have a lot of respect and appreciation for Counselor Fishbein. I think most of us on this hall know that Counselor Fishbein has been serving our town for many years. And I think we need to give a lot of gratitude to him and to the rest of the council. I don't mind saying that I was one of the individuals who signed the petition to have him resign. After hearing his apology, if one were to ask me if I regret signing that petition, I'm not sure. I need to think about it. But I think we need to look forward as a town. The point of this is not to beat up on any one individual or any small group. The point of this is to learn from this. Going forward, as a town, we need to condemn this behavior and we all need to make sure that we're being respectful of all individuals in our town. Thank you.
All right, that's all I have for comments from the public. Counselor Fishbein, I appreciate your apology. Um, I think that the uh, that the vote here is to address the conduct and not you the person, and I hope you can separate yourself from that, and I think that you did in your apology. So with that, um, I will call the roll. Madam Clerk, please.
Okay. Um, Fishbein?
Huh. Um. I, I, I vote yes.
Laffin?
Yeah.
Marone?
Yes.
Morganstein? Yes. Shortell?
Yes.
Tada?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Dandry?
Yes.
And Chairman Savani?
Yes.
And the motion passes.
Uh, moving along the agenda, we are now on item three, which is discussion and possible action on, on resolution of the town of Wallingford to reopen business. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, uh, may I be recognized? Sorry.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we pass the resolution that was drafted as a result of our last meeting.
There's second.
Second.
Counselor Marone, seconds. Any, uh, comments from the council? Counselor Fishbein, would you like to keep the floor?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Um, I, I thank you and, uh, the Law Department for putting together the document. You know, while in some aspects, I, I don't think it perhaps goes far enough. I, I think it does address the needs and what we discussed at the, uh, at the last meeting. Uh, I once again appreciate, um, the work that was put into this. You know, I think it's important that we be able to stand up for our businesses, not in, not in a defiant manner. But, you know, I get calls every day from businesses in our town. You know, we had the, the situation with the hairdressers a few weeks ago. Um, very distressed that they had put things in place. And I know that I've talked to other business owners that are ready for phase two. And, you know, their comments, the most part is, "What are we waiting for? I'm ready. I've put those procedures in place." This resolution is not an act of defiance. It merely says to the governor, you know, "Consider this." Um, considering some local control here, our health director is a professional. Uh, health director is involved in a lot of these things. Our health director has been scurrying around our town over the past few weeks making sure that the various things that the state has mandated are going into place. But these businesses should have an opportunity if they're ready to comply now and the governor sees fit to allow that to happen now. It's a request. I think it's an important request on behalf of our business community. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Next up is Counselor Shortell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, um, I have a mixed record on these types of resolutions. This is, uh, I guess the third one since I've been on the council. Uh, and I'm one for one, or one for two. Uh, we had one on the Marino bill in 2017, which was a bill that uh, there was a lot of concern that it weakened the DEA and it was brought to us by the mayor and, and by yourself and it passed eight to one. Then we had a resolution on tolls about a year ago. Uh, and that also passed. I voted against the tolls one. I voted for the Marino bill. And I, I'd like to have a consistent answer, like I never, I never vote for these or I always vote for them and I don't, like everything else. I, I, I look at each one and, and what my gut says. Uh, my gut told me on the Marino bill it was the right thing to do. When I had the mayor in front of us, we had the coalition in front of us, we were hearing about it. Um, but I will say, there was one counselor who gave me a lot of food for thought that night. Uh, and that was Craig. And he had some, I think, some valid reasons in terms of the, the content. Uh, then came the tolls one. Uh, and the tolls one was another one where, uh, I struggled because I myself had not made up my mind where I was on the issue and I felt that it wasn't the town's place to weigh in on a state issue. Uh, and where would it end? With its tolls one minute, where are we going to have resolutions on every other issue at the state level, at the federal level? I mean, did we, and I, you know, did the, does the town council routinely have resolutions on other issues prior? Maybe they did. I mean, maybe when I was in college, I think when I was in college, Governor Wyker passed the income tax. Did the town council in 1990 pass the resolution against Lowell Wyker and the income tax? Maybe they did. Uh, did the town council pass the resolution, uh, against the government for, for its utter failure in finding WMDs in Iraq? Maybe they did and I wasn't paying attention. I don't know. I, I just feel like, where does, where do you draw the line? Um, but one thing that, that Counselor Fishbein has taught me is that it's okay to go your own way. It's okay to buck the status quo a- a- and to follow your conscience. And that's what I did on the toll vote. Uh, I had Counselor Fishbein calling me for a year, telling me I was the only local Republican on a council who voted that way. So maybe this will be two for two with this one. Um, when it comes to this specific situation, I'm once again feeling like I fought with the tolls. I, nobody is more sympathetic to our businesses than I am. Nobody needs a haircut more than I do. I'm going, at this time tomorrow, I'll be getting a haircut. So I don't, I will not look like I'm stepping out of a Burt Reynolds movie, uh, after tomorrow night. But some of you got that. Thank you for laughing. Uh, Burt Reynolds is a famous actor for others of you that, that don't know that. Um, I guess my point is
Your microphone has cut out. If, if you're spouting brilliance, we're not hearing it.
Happened in Pennsylvania. When they closed the liquor stores in Pennsylvania and, uh, they all went to Ohio to buy liquor and Ohio would just shut down their liquor stores or, or to out of state people. So, um, it's, I think it was Director Civitelli who commented that, that it's like having a peeing section in the swimming pool. When you start getting involved in these local, these local pockets, so we're going to do this, this way in, in one town and, and another town. So, um, I'm just concerned about the example this sets. Uh, I think that our leaders have done the best that they can. And, you know, I'll close with, with, with this thought. Where I'm probably most open to the town council passing a resolution is on something local, like something in Wallingford. We've certainly not passed any resolutions in town that I can recall, except to congratulate, you know, when Nyman Hall wins championship or something. So, um, there are certainly controversial things that have happened in town recently and over the years. And I don't recall the town council passing resolutions, but we're going to weigh in on the state. It just, it just feels political and I understand the frustration. But I, I, I can't support this. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Testa.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had gone to great lengths in our previous meeting to express my feelings on this. Uh, so I won't reiterate much of that. But I also went to great lengths to get everybody to agree. I don't want to put it that way, like I didn't do it, but, but I stressed that if we were to, uh, appeal to the governor in such a way that we're just simply asking him to reconsider uh, certain reopening, uh, requirements or certain dates in a way that would allow the town to, uh, I guess, take over the enforcement responsibilities, then, uh, i- in a way that demonstrates to our local businesses, we understand their plight, we care about their plight. But we, uh, then, then I wasn't, I wasn't opposed to that. And, but I also stressed that I, I did not, I was not in favor of us in any way going alone. I also, uh, was not in favor of anything that would, that would express um, in a, in a in a meaningful way from a, from us as a representative body, that we felt somebody was doing something wrong or improper. Some things I feel very strongly about. Anecdotally, we could disagree on certain things. The decisions to allow opening and then changing the, the decision to hold off opening uh, the salons and so forth, uh, is something we could, we could criticize and, and argue about and discuss. But in the big picture, the governor's been making decisions based on the advice of people that we have to trust. All of those decisions have been using as a guideline or as guidelines the type of expertise that is being passed along by our, our CDC at a federal level. No one's doing this perfectly, but they're doing their best. But we have to trust in the big picture, the experts that know more than we do, regardless of how emotional we may feel about certain things. So I'm not looking to buck that. But as I said, if we, we, if we had a feeling that, well, you know, there are certain businesses that uh, perhaps, uh, may open now based on the guidelines that have been established for two or three weeks from now. And let's ask the governor to reconsider that. And I was willing to ask to approve a request to see a resolution driven, dr- uh, written to that end. And the discussion changed that evening to the point where I was assured that that's all we would be doing. And then I saw the resolution. So I would merely point out one section of it. And it's near the end. It's the second to the last whereas. Whereas at this point in time, the decision to allow certain businesses to open while others are shut is arbitrary. You lost me. That's it. That in and of itself is not the message I want us sending. That is not the, that we agreed, we were trying to send. It is a, what it, it amounts to a statement. Uh, frankly, a political statement. And that puts us on board with other efforts to challenge the, the governor and what he's been, how he's been handling this. And that's what I was trying to have us avoid and that's what I, what I was opposed to and what I was offended by. And when I read that statement in the resolution, at that point, I had no interest in allowing this to go forward. Uh, in fact, I felt betrayed in spirit and in, uh, collegial respect. Or lacking a better way to put it, in that we agreed to go forward in cer- a certain way and then this is how we ended up going forward. So I am, I oppose this vehemently because of the tone and the spirit in which it seems to be, uh, issued. So, thank you.
Can I ask you, Counselor Testa, is there a word that you would substitute instead of arbitrary?
No.
Okay.
No, you want to take out the whole line? I might reread it, but no, I think I, I, that, that, that was the primary reason I objected to it. The, the, the tone of that, that particular The, the, the tone of that, that particular phrase and the tone of it in that respect. And, and I'll, I'll be honest with you, if I read it over again now and I start fine tuning the wordsmithing, I might be able to come up with something that I would consider, but it lost me at that point and I, you know, and then that was it. Don't look at it more while we're all talking.
Thank you, Counselor Morgenstein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, everybody. So everyone knows I voted no to even consider such a thing. Very difficult times for everyone, very difficult times to be in-town government here and Chris Chertel hit on some of the thoughts that I had had as well regarding these resolutions. This resolution was brought up under the guise of, we're going to talk about graduation and then we move it over into this resolution. As a council member, if I were asked to vote on a resolution acknowledging the loss of over 100,000 lives and honoring their memory, I would do that, but we're not voting on that. I would gladly vote on a resolution supporting our town workers and ensuring their safety and that their health comes first. We're not being asked to vote on that. I would gladly vote on a resolution recognizing the hard work, sacrifice that our essential workers, our first responders, our healthcare workers are making every day. We're not being asked to vote on that. I'd gladly vote on a resolution, very interesting that I wrote this three or four days ago, condemning systemic racism and the needless death of yet another person of color. We're not being asked to vote on that. Instead, we're being asked to vote on something that in of its essence is divisive. The very existence of this resolution is divisive at a time when we should be coming together. The reopening is happening. We're all living our lives in a way that is exposed to more exposure now. Various people are participating in that reopening in different ways. Nothing against the businesses. My heart goes out. Again, my own family business, probably not existing any longer. But this resolution does not fix any of those things. It's a statement that is divisive and political. And once again, I will vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Morone, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, just two quick points. One to address, address Mr. Chertel's notion of the arbitrary nature of this motion. I think that town businesses are suffering more now than they've been at any point in the time that I've been living here, under mandate of, of closure. I'm not even certain, you know, I understand there's a health concern. I'm not even certain of the constitutionality of keeping businesses closed this long when there's no perceived threat. So I don't think that this is the same as other motions. I think that we're looking for action on this one because people in our town are hurting. To address Mr. Testa and Ms. Morgenstein, I think that the I can understand why you don't like the word arbitrary. However, I don't know how else to describe the situation that we have right now. It seems like the big box stores were all allowed to operate regardless of what they sell and all the mom and pop stores were required to close. So as you drive down Route five, you know, what you see is, you know, the Starbucks and the dungeon and everything are all open and a lot of, all the mom and pop businesses are trying to struggle with takeout or with, or just closing their doors. So I don't know how you look at this in a way that's other than arbitrary and potentially capricious in terms of the way state government has handled this. So if we opened a few days earlier, I, I guess the question is, what's the harm? We're ready to let the salons open early and then due to whatever reason, the governor felt like some of the salons weren't ready and kept them closed longer. So the ones that were ready still didn't get a chance to open. So I just feel like a lot of this, the way this has been handled has not been in the spirit of what the CDC said or what the WHO has said about this. And I just think that we need to open America up again and open Wallingford up again. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Up next is Counselor Zandry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So unfortunately, you know, I've had a lot of discussions since I, I cast my vote to push this thing for, forward. And, and the one, the one discussion that always comes up that seems to be a conversation stopper and it kind of falls into line with that whole arbitrary statement. If I am six feet from somebody else and I am wearing a mask and it's okay for me to be in Walmart, I want to know why if I'm wearing a mask and I'm six feet away, why can't I stand in, in, in another business? You know, why can't I be in the comic collector store? Why can't I be in somebody's, I don't know, you know, widget shop where they sell widgets? It's like certain businesses were allowed to open and certain businesses were told to stay closed. And to me, that's arbitrary. Because if they meet the same standards, why must they be closed and others be open? Now the argument's going to be, all right, some are essential businesses and others are not. And I don't even want to get into the discussion, who gets to choose what's essential and what isn't. But at the end of the day, I could go, if I shopped at Walmart in my mask, standing six feet away and buy a pair of jeans. But I couldn't do it at a Target and I couldn't do it at local jean shop somewhere else because they were told to stay closed. And I think this is part of the problem. It is on top of all of the other issues that are being discussed right now. Businesses that have lost money, businesses that have spent money, time and effort to get to a point to reopen, only to be told, now you got to stay closed another few days. What was the reason for that? Moving the goalpost from the 20th to the first. And every emotional reason for it. This is not dismissing people that have been sick. This is not dismissing the fact that people have died. This is not insensitive at all. It is sensitive to everything. It is all-inclusive sensitivity to everybody. People that have been sick, people that have been impacted, people that have, that have worked in businesses for 40 years that will never work those businesses again because eight weeks, 12 weeks is too much. And now they're going to go headwind into a soft opening because no matter how much they advertise that they're open, people are still going to be cautious to go back and rightly so. They're going to continue to struggle. We were asked to sacrifice, to flatten the curve. We all did that. We're there. The goalpost moving has to stop. And if sending a unified message to do that is a way to get the thought process started, I don't care that it's already happening. We could argue the same thing for other things that are happening in other towns and other cities. Why should we do it too? Why shouldn't we? This was my way of saying that I acknowledge what's happened. I acknowledge the sacrifice, but it's time to start moving forward. And I want to continue to think that way and be progressive that way. That's part of my nature. And I, and I like to believe that that's the intent of the message. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Up next is Counselor Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the comments for and against the resolution. In an attempt to try and get this to a happier place, especially with Counselor Testa's comment on the utilization of the word arbitrary, which does have a connotation to it, which is, you know, sticky. And in conjunction with Counselor Zandry's comments, perhaps an appropriate replacement, if I may offer, would be inconsistent. You know, why, you know, churches aren't able to have ma- masses. But, you know, I can go into Walmart with a mask. You know, why can't I go to a mass in church and have a, a mask on? That is, in my opinion, inconsistent. We see inconsistency in various areas. So not to denigrate, but merely to comment. I, I think inconsistent would be an appropriate word. I'll offer that to the body to consider. But that's all I had to say. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Laffin, you're up.
Thanks. Excuse me. Thank you. Yeah. You know, I, I hear everything Counselor Testa was saying. When I read the, the resolution, I was surprised at, at the how the, the resolution ended up being worded based on the discussion and the aggression, I guess, for lack of a better word, right? The word arbitrary. I'm not disagreeing that it's not arbitrary. You know, people are upset. They're really sticking to the whole six-foot thing. But then the same people are saying, well, you know, this certain medicine wasn't tested thoroughly and we don't have enough science behind it. The six-foot thing is, was kind of a, you know, we didn't do solid studies on the six feet for this particular virus and the travel of spittle and all this other stuff. So I, I get that, but it, that whole, that whole section, that whole whereas comes off a little more political to me than what I thought we were, what we're aiming for as far as governing goes. I was wondering if, I assume, Attorney Small or somebody in the attorney's office, who, who drafted it or what was the, what was the, the thought there? I just wanted to understand the progression or how we got there as we're trying to decide whether to adjust it or possibly take it out or leave it in. I'm not sure if somebody who, who drafted it could speak to that.
That was Attorney Small. Are you still on the call?
I, excuse me, yes. I was only given the motion and the motion does not discuss all the things that you've just discussed. So that might be something to think about. Beefing up the instructions. However, I was also given a sample of Cromwell and another town from out of state and they were quite I would describe as rather belligerent about these orders. And which is why I, I put the caveat when I gave you this draft resolution that in fact I was not going to put anything about it being illegal because I hadn't done any research on that. And that's what those other resolutions said. So the resolution could be anything you want it to be and feel free, I take no offense, to you modifying it. And had someone alerted to me that that did not capture what your actual intentions were, I would have modified it ahead of time. So you know, this is your resolution, so you can mark it up, change it any way you wish. I think Councilman Zandry and Councilman Morone really, when I use the word arbitrary, that's what I was capturing. I was attempting to give what I thought was something that perhaps you wanted to be in there at this point in time, being in June. And there does seem to be some inconsistent actions with respect to opening businesses. So that was my intent. I talked to the economic development and said, you know, what can I say something about the economy of Wallingford? That's where I got the 28,000 jobs. But when all of a sudden done, this is your resolution. It is a motion that is dressed up and it's supposed to convey your concerns and your position on something. So feel free to, to modify it if you so wish.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah. And I, because I just wanted to understand kind of where, where it came from and and, I mean, you draft, I think you specifically draft, like, all of our laws, right? For the most part. So I wanted to just kind of get a handle on where it was coming from. You said you got it from Cromwell and, and somewhere else. So I mean, give these, those to you or you just reached out and was looking for examples? I'm just trying to, 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 I want to, I would love for us to, to be united on this. And I understand Counselor Chertel's opposition based on principle to all resolutions, which it sounds like is, is going to be his thing going forward. But I thought that the way that the conversation evolved last time and Counselor Testa's involvement in discussions and that I thought were, were fruitful or, or productive. And I, and I'd hate to see his support lost on it, to, to be frank, just because sometimes he, he does bring that kind of rational, rational thought to it. So do you just reach out around to it or are you just trying to figure out like what, or I'm trying to get at like general, like where are we going to go from here, like motivations and stuff?
So I believe that the chair forwarded those examples from Councilman Fishbein. I think that's where they came from. So, and you can see that, and just so that you know, I did, you know, I thought that there, you wanted to get this resolution done in a timely manner. And I did not watch your meeting, so perhaps I should have done that. But so your, all I have is the motion and the motion did not capture what you just discussed. But I will tell you that I did, after drafting this for you, I did do some research. And there's certainly, there is already a district court decision in Connecticut, which basically says that the governor's actions with respect to there, it was a challenge by restaurants and the court said that under Supreme Court case law that was okay. So, and I'm not saying that what the governor's doing is not okay. I, but I do appreciate and I, that's what I was looking, I thought the council wanted to convey with the comments by Councilmen Zandry and Morone about the status of the getting back to work. So as I said, this is, this is yours. It's not owned by me. It's my attempt to to capture what it is you want in a resolution form. And if it's not, then you know, you should, you should make changes to it.
No, and you, and you're totally right. We, I think we were probably all very tired and a little worn when we got to that point and maybe used to being at some ordinance meetings where you're, where we ask and bounce questions off you all the time throughout the meeting. I think we kind of just fell back into a relax-the-day school approach on that motion. So I, I totally acknowledge that that was, that was something that probably went a little too easily. You know, and I no, and I, I mean, I got to say, part of Counselor Testa's and Counselor Testa, please correct me if I'm wrong, concern a week ago was and I'm sorry, you know, Counselor Fishbein, there's an incredible amount of, you know, distrust in governing going forward here. It was that we were part of just pawns in a larger political state game. And, and that, that, this, this was a little more assertive and aggressive, if not was. It, it definitely was. So to find out then that that all along it kind of like was pushed along. It, it just has a, it leaves a bad taste in my mouth and, and I'm thinking about whether we should just strike that whole whereas altogether. But as I'm thinking about that in the back of my head, I want to make an amendment actually to the last whereas so that it will read. And I'm going to start reading the whereas and then I'll, I'll stop for the motion. Whereas a town, whereas the town of Wallingford has complete confidence in the ability and commitment of town businesses. I motion to amend, to add here, and our public health and enforcement officials. And then return to the as drafted, to open and operate in a safe manner, in full compliance with all guidelines and executive orders. And I think that's important. It is important to me and I think it's important to some of the other people based on our previous conversations because we asked Steve Civitelli, you know, what's going on? What do you think? How do you feel about this? We asked Tim Ryan, our economic guy. You know, how do you feel? You know, what should we do about this? Where are you on this? And I think my intent was not to, I do not agree with, with everything, a lot of what Governor Lamont might be doing. I have to believe he's doing his best. But my intent with the resolution was to not make some sort of grandiose for the point of it, political statement or be part of any sort of political play or pawn of Free Connecticut or anything like that. But to kind of say like, hey, you're doing the best you can. No offense. You're setting up some guidelines, but can our public health guys, based on those guidelines, handle? But can our public health guys, based on those guidelines, handle the situation from here and, and execute on those? And I know we don't have the authority. We're not the administration. We're not the mayor. I'm not Steve Savitelli to do that. Um, I think, my point is that my request is that as a town, as a town council and representative body, we're saying, this is how we feel we can do in Wallingford. And I don't mean this to be a, we're in a whole oasis in the middle of whatever. Um, I'm just trying to say that, you know, I think this is all so crazy that, and I, and I often say this, the smallest level of government is the most efficient. And sure, it is important, as Counselor Morganstein has stated, that, um, that we kind of being in unison with the areas around us and, and whatnot, and, and that all affects us. Um, but we need, we, I think we need tighter control over that implementation. So that was a long, um, ending to that. That's not all part of the motion. Uh, that's just, that was my reasoning. But so my motion is to add the words in our town public, uh, health and enforcement officials into the last section, um, of the resolution as drafted.
Second. Uh, procedurally, I'd ask the movement, who was, I believe Counselor Fishbein, if he would accept that as a friendly amendment.
Um, yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to comment on it also, but I, I would, um, uh, I just, I don't know where it would go, first of all. Um, I, I know that Counselor Laffin did, I think, when he first read it, indicate where he thought it would go, but then in the motion, he did not. So there's perhaps, there could be clarification as to that?
Sure. Uh, I want the last section to read in its entirety, where, uh, I don't want, I'm suggesting. Whereas the town of Wallingford has complete confidence in the ability and commitment of town businesses and our town public health and enforcement officials to open and operate in a safe manner in full compliance with all guidelines and executive orders.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I, I would accept that as a friendly amendment. I would just point out, um, and not to be, um, argumentative, that I believe the first part is a series of findings of fact, and that the second part is the actual resolution itself. And that it does indicate there is a reference to our health department there. But I don't see it, um, a harm in adding that. Therefore, I would accept it as a friendly amendment. Thank you.
And would the seconder of Counselor Fishbein's motion, uh, second that? Was that Counselor Zandry?
No, it was Counselor Marone.
Thank you, Counselor Marone.
Sorry. Yes, Mr. Chairman, I will second that.
Terrific. All right. Uh, next up is Counselor Shortell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just had a few responses. Uh, I actually said the opposite of what Vice Chair Laffin said. I said, I, uh, I have, I have a very mixed bag on resolutions. I voted for the Marino one. I voted against the tolls one, and I'm probably, I'm gonna vote against this one. Uh, I take them as they come. I just, I, I feel as though, with some really bad analogies thrown out tonight. So someone said, you can't go to mass, but you can go to Walmart. So as a practicing Roman Catholic, let me describe what happens at mass. There are people crowded together for about an hour. Toward the end, we all get holy communion. Many of us on the tongue administered by a priest. It's a far different experience than going around a well-ventilated large place like Walmart. It is completely different. So I just wanna point that out. Um, and I can't speak to other denominations, synagogues, mosques. Uh, you know, I know the Eastern Orthodox religions have three-hour masses. So, um, I think that, you know, nobody wants to get back to church more than I do. But, um, we recognize what we have to do. You know, somebody else said that, well, these businesses are closed without, against what's, there's no perceived threat. This virus has killed 100,000 people with the country on lockdown. I, I don't know how else to say it. The, the country's been on lockdown and it's killed 100,000 people in three months. And it, it, you know, it, what concerns me is that, and I didn't say this last time, because I, I just, um, it's been a long day. But there is a tinge here of sort of this far-right, this was all a hoax. It's not in the wording. I'm not saying it's in the wording. I'm not gonna point to a word. It's a feeling I get. I said, I talked about my gut. This is far-right. This is all a hoax. And this whole thing, you know, I'm not gonna wear a mask. Make America great again. It's all that. And that's why it rubs me the wrong way. I'm sure that many of you may not, um, that's fine. I'm just being honest. And to the final point, Vice Chair Laffin said he doesn't wanna make a grandiose political statement. The only functional purpose of this, the only thing this does is it's a grandiose political statement. It's nothing else. This doesn't do anything. This doesn't open any businesses. This passes no law. It's words on a page. If it's not a grandiose political statement, then what, what good is it for? I, I'm not, I'm just trying to understand, that, that statement means this collapses under the weight of its own logic, because that's the only thing it's for. And that, and that does go back to my hesitation to, to doing these types of things at the town council level. You know, the, as I said, you know, again, um, I don't know. I, I think I've said enough. I thank you for your time, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Fishbein.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, you know, I don't know how, how one gets their haircut without somebody getting close. But we now can get, I got my haircut today. Counselor Shortell has mentioned that he's gonna get his haircut tomorrow. Surely the closeness in church with priests, individuals can be accomplished through utilization of some sort of procedures. We're at the, right aid, yeah, lines on the floor. Lines on the floor could be used for communion. I'm not saying this is impossible. I'm just saying that things can happen. Um, I, I just wanted to be clear that I had nothing at all to do with the drafting of this resolution. I know Janice did, um, Trey Small mentioned that she got a copy of the two resolutions from Chairman Servoni. I did forward those two, Chairman Servoni, merely for purposes of knowing what's out there. No comment from me. Didn't say this is what I want it to look like. Nothing at all. So, you know, I know there's been allegations of some sort of other nefarious thing going on here. My representations stand as they were at the last meeting and they are at this meeting. Um, I understand Counselor Shortell's reservations, uh, and I respect the reservations on, on having a resolution. But quite frankly, you know, this whole resolution thing started with the Marino thing. That was Congress. This body signed a resolution having to do with a bill that wasn't even before Congress. You know, a week before election. That started this. This has to do with Wallingford businesses. This isn't the legalization of marijuana or something like that. It's a highly debated state issue. The tolls, we were pretty clear in the toll resolution that tolls would perhaps have a negative impact on the economy of our town. That was the position that most of us took, standing up for our residents. That's all this is. Didn't, you know, sending a message. It's not even so much, it's a, it's a request. Um, you know, I, if we could get Counselor Testa to, to support this, you know, I, I think maybe we would get rid of that first line on that whereas, if, you know, that would get him to support this, because, you know, I would like everybody to support this, not just to be together and supporting our small businesses. So, um, that's all I had. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Attorney Small is chopping at the bit.
Okay. Just, just for the record, I did not write a resolution from a far-right standpoint. I wrote a resolution based upon a motion that I understood was an eight-to-one vote. So this, this is kind of outwages to be accused of writing a far-right resolution. So if you don't want the arbitrary in it, take it out. Frankly, I thought you might, I thought I was gonna get commented on that it wasn't strong enough. So that's, you can do this. You can write the whole thing if you wanted to. But I take strong exception that I wrote a resolution from a far-right perspective. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
With that, Counselor Testa. You're still on mute.
Yeah, I know.
Welcome.
As you all wish. Um, I'm glad Counselor Shortell just put a chat in there. Um, because I was gonna say the same thing, Counselor Shortell. I don't believe, I don't believe his, his reference to that was, been ref, was, um, directed to the wording of the, of the, uh, resolution. I believe it was to the, the, the whole idea of how and why we're doing this. And I'm glad he said what he had to say, because that's how I feel. Um, having nothing to do with the wording in this. I, I have, um, no criticism of, of Attorney Small's work here. Let, let me tell you something. Don't, don't start wordsmithing on my account. I'm not going for this, no matter what you do. Let's just get that straight. You can't make enough changes at this point. Um, a word here, a comment, there isn't gonna make it happen. That I have multiple objections to the way it, it's structured. Um, it, and we're not gonna fix it unless we sit together for three hours around a table and try to write something, and it's not gonna happen. Um, the, uh, I'm back on it for a second. Resolve the town of Wallingford calls on Governor Lamont. And see, there, there's so much to this that is not gonna work for me. So, uh, I would save you a lot of time and effort if that's your, your concern. If anyone's gonna put any effort into trying to reword something to get my support, it's, it's gonna be a moot point. Um, there, multiple times, on several occasions, Counselor Fishbein, you've, you've, he's said, we're just asking. No, we're not asking. Okay. We're not asking. That was what I was hoping for, but we're not. We're calling on. Certainly, we can't do anything but make this, make a resolution. And, um, as I said, I thought, okay, you know, I'll go along and see what, what we come up with. And if it's, if, if I, if I like it, I'll continue to accept it. Well, I don't. So that's okay. There's, I'm not on board with anything that implies that the, uh, the state government has handled this poorly. And with a disregard in any way, shape or form for any certain businesses. There are scientific reasons behind the selection of different businesses, of different types, in different sized buildings and of this, that, the other thing. When people say, oh gee, I can't, I can't go here, but I can go to Dunkin' Donuts or Starbucks. Yeah, you went through a drive-through. So that, there are, there are reasons why these orders have been put in place the way they have, and they are gradually going to change. Um, so at this point, I believe challenging them, uh, in effect amounts to no more than, um, a, uh, grandstanding, for the lack of a better word. I'm, as in favor of supporting our local businesses as anyone else on this council. And I don't believe any of us, whether we vote yes or no, would be accused by any other of their colleagues for not being as concerned. We, we might criticize one another for how we feel about this, but I think we can all agree. We're all on the same page in our love for this town, our concern for our businesses and our residents. Um, but sometimes we have to step back and say, you know what? This is such a draft, a horrible thing we've had to deal with. Nothing's been handled perfectly, but there is a plan that we've been following. And the reason 100,000 people have died and not a half a million or more is because we did what we did. Some could argue it should have been less than 100,000, and we could start getting political about that. Perhaps we can, I can, I can suggest a resolution criticizing the federal government for the way they've handled things. So we don't, I don't think we wanna get into this. We were criticizing our respective, um, governments for how they're handling this, because in the big picture, we're doing the best we can. And, um, well, that, that's all I've said, what I have to say. Thank you very much.
Counselor Marone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to, to address that last point, you know, criticism is a foundation of American democracy. So I don't think it's wrong for us to criticize any other government, nor is it wrong for people to criticize us. Uh, but to that, I think we've beaten this horse enough, and I'd like to call the question.
There is a motion to call the question. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Pick your second, Madam Clerk. Any discussion on the motion to call the question? There being none, Madam, uh, all those in favor of calling the question, uh, I have to, I have to, you have to call the roll. The, the all I or all nay won't work in this format. I'm sorry.
It's okay. So this is a, we're gonna call the question first.
Thank you, yes.
Okay. Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
No.
Marone?
Yes.
Morganstein?
Yes.
Shortell?
Yes.
Tada?
No.
Testa?
Yes.
Zandry?
No.
Chairman Servoni?
Yes. I believe that makes it six-three.
Yes.
All right. The motion carries. Now please call the roll on the resolution.
Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Marone?
Yes.
Morganstein?
No.
Shortell?
No.
Tada?
Yes.
Testa?
No.
Zandry?
Yes.
Chairman Servoni?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you. Moving along the agenda, this is our opportunity for motions on the budget. And I did receive an earlier note in the chat bar that Counselor Shortell, uh, forgive me, before I move on to Counselor Shortell, I had a question about public comment. The motion to call the question, if, uh, the council passes it, that, um, that unfortunately eliminates public comment. And, uh, I did receive an earlier note in the chat bar from Counselor Shortell that he did have a motion on the budget. So Counselor Shortell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, uh, I guess I'm looking for guidance. You are aware of the motion. It's pretty lengthy. It's got a lot of detail that I'm gonna need to walk through. So I don't know how you want me to proceed.
I, I think, I think that, um, based upon historically, the way we've handled these situations, I think you should probably go line by line.
How do I share this document? I've emailed it, but I don't, with, with the council, I don't know how to share it. Whatever's in your inbox from about six, Dean is, should be the...
I haven't received, did you email it to me?
Oh, oops. No.
The clerk would like it, please.
First Janice, now you. I'm on a roll tonight. Uh, all right. Let me, hold on.
Right now.
I'm doing it right now. I'm gonna email it to you right now. Okay. I just sent it to you, Barbara. Well, should I kind of begin or should I wait till, does Barbara have to do any? Well, should I kind of begin, or should I wait till, does Barbara have to do anything with it, or?
What I'm gonna do is I am downloading it, and I am going to present it. I'm just waiting for my machine. Oh, here it is.
I had a few opening remarks. Could I make those maybe that aren't, they're not line by line, they're just sort of, or should I wait?
Go ahead.
Thank you. So what, what I'm gonna present is not mine. It, it's a group effort from several of us. Christina, Tada, and Craig, they're spying, and Joe Marone, and then Tom and Vinnie. We all, it was mostly the four of us, and Tom, Tom and Vinnie had input, and then toward the end, it was more the four of us, and then like, today it was mostly me trying to scramble and, and make some changes. So it's, it's far from perfect. But I just, I just wanna be clear on this. This is a group effort. I wanna be clear, whoops. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, you, you've been consistent.
Okay. Just, just from quick comments from me, even though this is a group, I mean, this is, you know, I don't think, I just wanna say that the mayor's budget, I, I don't have a big problem with the mayor's budget. I think it's a good budget. I think that it's always generally a good budget. So this is not an attempt to it's just an attempt for us as a council to try to accomplish a few different goals, to try to cut back spending a little more than the mayor does. And maybe make some of the savings we have work for us this year, and try to deliver to the residents a zero tax increase in a year that we've all, we've all acknowledged is a very hard year for people, and that this, we've seen other towns do this. That's all this is, but this is not in any way, you know, the mayor put together a good budget. I just wanna be clear on that, that, I believe that, and this may or may not succeed. I, I don't know. Let me start. There's really two components to this. There's some spending cuts, which you see on the screen. And there's another component to it. So we'll start with the spending cuts. This was a sort of an amalgam of two approaches. Counselor Tada had been asking different departments, could they cut 1%? I think it was a great strategy. And I liked it because it was, no one was exempt. You know, she was asking everyone. It didn't matter. When I looked at it, though, I was concerned that it was sort of arbitrary, and, and I wanted to sort of, could we, could we bring some, some data to, to what we were asking them to cut? So what I did was, kind of with her in mind, I went to look at the saving of each department the last four years. I went to the CAPR, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, and I pulled each department's savings of the last four years, and I picked the lowest number from those four years. And that was, and then we as a group kind of looked at that, and that was our basis to sort of start looking each department. So the lowest number, the last four years, that, that was unspent at the end of the year. And then my suggestion was, let's take half of it, and say, let's cut half of it as savings, because we have historical proof that this money has, has gone unspent for four years. So that was sort of the first pass. Take half of, take half of the lowest amount, and then we went line by line as a group and, and different, we looked at it and said, okay, what do we think, how did, where did this shake out? So that's what I'm gonna do very quickly. Well, it won't be quick, it's gonna be painful. The council tends to have some money in office supplies, so we cut $1,000 from office supplies and expenses.
Let, let Can I make a suggestion?
Yeah, please.
Why don't, I mean, why don't you move each line cut?
I'd like, well, I'd like to move it, when we, I could. I was thinking of moving it as a package, I guess, but if, if it, it doesn't, it, it works either way. I mean, if it I'm happy to do it that, I'm happy to do it that way, if you think that's better.
Historically, that's what we've done.
Okay, well, you're, that, that's why they pay you the stipend, which we did not touch. So I will, then I'm gonna move, all right, then I'll start. And Christine, you better unmute yourself, because you're gonna have a lot of seconds coming. I moved that we cut $1,000 from the town council office expenses and supplies.
I'll second. I, I kind of agree, though. I don't know that any of these on their own is, is that great of an idea without, without this being the entire package. So I'm a little concerned about doing it this way. I don't want some of these to get approved, and then you know, if only half of these get approved, the whole thing, I, I don't think works, but that being said, I think we'll second it, but
You, you don't know that you have enough support for this whole package to pass without going through the lines individually. All right, with that, I have comments from Counselor Fishbein.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree. A little hesitant to not deal with this as a package, perhaps if Mr. Chairman would like the items to be dealt with on a line by line item. I know it makes it a little bit more cumbersome for Counselor Shortell, but quite frankly, $1,000 cut, if that's the only cut that passes, you know, that's the only cut that passes, perhaps if it's a tiered approach, taking the highest amount and working backwards of the spending cuts, then you're actually getting somewhere with all due respect. The town council, not to set the council aside, it ends up towards the bottom of the pyramid, but you understand my reasoning. So that's what I would suggest. Don't wanna, you know, certainly don't wanna run the boat, so. That's all for me. Thank you.
Well, I, I will tell you that I, I, I wouldn't move this whole proposal as one motion. I, I mean, at the very least, you need to break it up into three. If you, if you don't wanna go line through, line by line through your cuts. So
May, Mr. Chairman, may I suggest, because there are three categories. If perhaps Counselor Shortell would be okay with running the cuts as one category with one vote, and then the other two categories by themselves, maybe that would meet his needs. So thank you.
If, if that's what, your, Counselor Shortell, if that's what your pleasure is, then you need to withdraw the pending motion in second, and then go from there.
There is nothing about the last two hours or the next two that's about my pleasure. So I, I will I, I don't know, I, I feel like there's merit, I I think we have to go line by, at some point, we have to go line by line. I kind of agree with you. I mean, I feel like we do need to do that. You know, someone, some, so I, I guess I also think if, I think most of these, well, if, if some of these don't pass, the second part of my, of our proposal is still valid, and I think could compensate for the ones that don't pass to Counselor Todd's concern. I, I do, I think we are okay there. But I don't know, what I, so
All right, well, it sounds like you're not withdrawing your present motion, and we'll have discussion on it.
Let's have, yeah.
So with that, up next is Counselor Zandry.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I had a general comment. I know in the past that when we've tried to have these different discussions about making the changes, that it was always a discussion point about having to talk about each line that was going to be cut, but, you know, I'm not necessarily opposed to moving it as a package either, and then if someone's got a problem with modifying a line, they can always say so. It's no different than the, the resolution we just discussed. The resolution had like multiple parts to it, and then there was some tweaking that tried to go on. If, if there's a line in here, some office expense or something, that someone makes a logical argument not to cut, and we don't cut it, and it's $500 and it's $1,000, we might be able to roll in that into some of the other line adjustments such as utilizing more of the, the general fund balance to offset maybe the 500 or the $1,000 or the $3,000 that maybe doesn't make the cut, and still try to get to the end result of not having an increase this year. So I, I guess, you know, again, it kind of goes back to Counselor Shortell, that he wants to go line by line or move a whole section. And then if someone's got an objection to particular assets in that section, maybe we could talk through those as opposed to going through the entire list, just another part of the thought process. Thank you.
Counselor Marone.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Real quick, you know, this was designed to be put out as a package, so I'd really like to see it presented as a package, and then to Counselor Zandry's point, if people wanna break it apart at that point, let's do it. But I, I think it was designed to all work together to sort of, you know, well, the, the writers of this package thought would sort of solve our concerns. So I think to take, you know, it in pieces, if you, if you turn down the first piece, then there may not be any, any point in talking about the second piece. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. We've had some discussion about how to go forward. There is a motion on the floor. The question becomes, Mr. Shortell, do you withdraw your motion and start moving packages, or do you continue with the current motion?
How about I withdraw my motion, and I just start going line by line describing this, and then I move the whole, just do it that way? Is that acceptable?
Well, at this point, I guess we're gonna see how it goes.
And I will withdraw my second.
All right. Back at you, Counselor Shortell.
Thank you. So you all know the methodology. I'm not gonna repeat it, how we got to these numbers. Lowest savings cut in half in the last four years, and then we played around with it. Town council, $1,000, office expenses and supplies. 500 from the mayor's line, same. We split that up. Specifically, we're not cutting, we do not wanna cut the mayor's salary at all. He's underpaid. We wouldn't touch that. Program planner, we did not, well, it's a zero, so there's nothing, the program planner's budget remains. Government access TV is 1,500. You can see in the notes where that is coming from, the law department. 4,600. The Board of Assessment Appeals. 500. Probably our first big ticket on here is finance, which is 27,000. Mr. Bose did indicate to Counselor Tata that he was willing and able to cut 1%, which would have equated to, I think, around 25, 26,000. So no, no good deed goes unpunished, Mr. Bose. So we did take you up on your generous, generous offer. We did not we tried to avoid what I would call the, you know, the well, funds that made no sense to cut, the health fund makes no sense to cut, it's for health insurance, et cetera. So you'll see a lot of zeros. The library's pure salary, debt service is debt service. The last item on, on page, I printed mine out on page one, is the police, and this is a, actually from the mayor that there was a network switch replacement that they, it looks like they've prepaid in this year's budget. That comes out. Should I pause there to see if anyone, I know Counselor Testa has a comment. I don't know if I should.
Why don't you call the cuts first?
Please go, I will comment after you're finished. Thank you very much.
Okay, all right, so keep going. Animal control, $3,000. You can see it's split between overtime and office expenses, youth and social services. Out of the part-time seasonal salaries, 3,000. This, this next one I wanna highlight, under social services, what this is, this is a significant, it's not dollar-wise significant, but it is something that the council has talked about. I, I think as people remember, there was concern on the council that when the Center Street Cemetery came before us, they did not give us a budget. They had not given us one last year either. They, they said to us that the reason is that they've been advised on the, on the advice of council to not share their budget. That bothered, some of us felt that if the town's giving a group money, we should see something. Especially the, the money was, the requested amount was $85,000, which is the amount they had a year ago. We also understand there's other groups, there's, there's a number of other groups that get money like that. Not as much, but, but they, you know, the community theater, Little League, all sorts of groups get money, and they don't give us anything either. So this is something I think the council is gonna have to look at in the future, but for this budget, we felt that because we don't have anything, our sort of resolution to this, no pun intended, was to give the cemetery what they got in 2018, which was the last time this council had a budget. So that's why, that's where that number comes from. So that reduction is specifically for that, for the cemetery. Just for that amount. They do great, they, they're a great group, it's nothing, it's just, we have to, we, we felt like we had to do something. And then we'll have to address this across the board, I think, outside of the budget process somehow. Veteran Service Center was not, Veteran Service Center was not cut. Recreation was pulled from salaries, seasonal and other, it's a specific line for, there's like 60 playground facilitators. It's a huge line. We're taking a little bit from that line. There's the, that's where that comes from. Engineering is mostly, again, this is from the mayor's memo on May 21st, that there was utilities for streetlights that have been we had a few small cuts on top of that, on expense, office expenses and training, but that's most of that cut. The next big one is Public Works. This is entirely from the overtime line, and the rationale is that first of all, they still have a sizable amount in that line, and that they can come to us if they need more during the year. That was the rationale for that. The registrar, we actually have a proposal to increase, that is, that's on the next page. These are all cuts, the reductions, not cut the reductions, but the registrar, we know there's a, a need because of the primary, so we'll come back to that. Barbara, I'm clerk. I didn't wanna cut you, they made me cut you. I was the only person that said I didn't wanna cut you, but they all made me cut you. So I'm kidding. You can see the line, some minor cuts there. Planning and zoning. A lot of these, you know, transportation allowances and things, things that are especially with COVID, we don't know if these things are gonna really be next, you know, we don't know when these things are gonna ramp up to the normal levels. That was some of the thought process. Inland wetlands, 1,000. EDC is one that was also, that was the mayor, and that was because Tim Ryan had told us that he was gonna hire an assistant, but he decided to wait six months. I think he told us that during his workshop, so that's where that savings comes from. The Conservation Commission consistently say has $1,000 unspent. So this is in reaction to that, just to cut that back a little bit. So the last two are probably gonna be the, the two, you know, discussion, I don't know, we'll see how controversial. Contingency, we are making a, a significant cut to again, there's still over $200,000 in contingency. I think more, actually more than that. But that account typically, some years it is spent down, many years it is not. So it's something that we felt we could, we could do. And then the Board of Ed, we, we had a lot of discussion on the Board of Ed. And we did end up looking at $100,000 there. They are running a $3 million surplus this year. Which a million, a million of which is coming back, understood, but it felt like that, that we, we should, there was an opportunity just to reduce them a little bit. So that's, that's the first part of this. In terms of the proposed cuts, I can pause now.
Would you like to make all of your comments to this point on the proposed cut? Would you like to make that one motion?
No, I think I'd like to keep going and do the whole, do the next part, and then make that a motion.
Then carry on.
Thank you. So the second part is there's really, and there's only two parts to this, really. The second part, oh, there's three, there's, there's a third, there's two increases. Human Resources, 56,000 for unemployment, that is from the mayor, that was a suggestion from the mayor. And then 20,000 for the registrar voters, for the primary, it's coming up, and, and stuff that was not budgeted. So that brings the total reductions, if you, those are increases, so those, the reductions come out to 451, 625. To get us to a zero, we have to get to 1,208, so we, that leaves us 828,375 dollars short. The other part of this is, we didn't want to touch the general fund, the, the so-called surplus. So we do know that there is 1.2 million in the cap and non that is unassigned, we know that from our budget workshops. So the thought was that we would, we also can't, I don't, we don't have the ability to take, to touch that either. Because it's not part of the, but the unassigned cap and non money is not part of the budget. Can influence is the electric division pilot money, which comes into the cap and non, which is the 1.830747. So the proposal is to take the remainder to balance the budget from there, which would leave over a million dollars left from the pilot, which would also mean that, that to do all the work that's been proposed in cap and non for this year, those cap and non reserves could be utilized to do that, the 1.2 million, there's more than enough money in there to compensate for that. There's a question in the chat, do we throw taxpayers out of line when we close the tax office with taxpayers still in line at 5:00 PM to comply with the cut to overtime? Since mostly overtime is that, for that office. Maybe we invest in technology, so we don't need as many people, I don't know, that's my thought there, the council can talk about that. Another comment, this is from Mr. Bose and the mayor, I don't know who's saying what, where is Public Works going to make up 158,000 in overtime? Especially with the cut to contingent. Contingency is often not spent down, there's hundreds of thousands of, so, I'm sorry?
You're, you're cutting out.
Okay, I was just responding to that, that comment. Oh, I'm sorry, I was just going to say contingency is often, there's hundreds of thousands of dollars, not every year, but many years left in contingency. Again, this is not perfect, and I'm open, you know, we are open, we're just trying to find, we were trying to find a path to a zero that, you know, doesn't limit services and doesn't touch, there's other ways to do this, we were just trying to find one way, so that's really, I'll stop, I think that's really it for now.
Okay, but there's no motion on the table.
Oh, I make a motion to, to pass this package as presented.
Second.
All right, there's a motion in a second, I'm going to start at the bottom of your proposal, which is currently on screen. Using the electric division pilot money this year to offset the tax increase creates a revenue problem for next year, because you're basically using non-taxpayer money to fund reoccurring expenses. And the question becomes, do you commit to regularly using that electric division pilot money for that purpose, in which case it continues, you not contribute to a tax increase? Or do you next year shift that money back to its historical purpose, which is capital projects? In which case, you're starting next year's budget with an $828,000 tax increase. So I'm just letting you know, that's, that's where I have a problem with the package. Any other comments from the council?
I request.
Yeah, you are, you are next, Counselor Testa.
Okay, thank you. I don't, yeah, I'm taking a close look at this, I appreciate the work you've all put into this. I was pretty adamant personally about not making any cuts on the education budget, but this, that is not a substantial amount, and given the overall approach and the situation they're in, I'm not going to quibble over that. I have a procedural question, an issue. I don't, I, please correct me if I'm wrong. I don't believe we can divert funds from the electric division pilot to anything other than the cap and non-recurring account per ordinance? And then per charter, I don't believe we can use any of that money for anything other than capital expenses. I can read the sections if you want. But why don't I? And I lost it. There it is. Dot, dot, dot. The fund to be used solely to pay the cost of capital improvements for which the town has authorized to issue bonds. And et cetera, et cetera. There's something in there, it says you can't use it for ongoing expenses. I'll leave it to the town attorney to correct me on that one. I don't believe we can use any money that's in the cap and non-recurring fund for anything other than capital expenses. Now, having said that, if we were to divert money into the general budget from that fund, and those dollars were used somehow for capital expenses, over the course of the year, we, we may or may not be able to overcome that, but I don't know if it's still possible. But I, I also believe by ordinance, Article 246-6, we talk about 46 for the creation of this fund, or capital non-recurring expenditures, and under sources of funding, one of them is the formula for getting the capital, I mean, getting the pilot. But suffice to say, by charter and by ordinance, I don't believe we can use electric division money for anything other than capital expenditure. So that causes a problem for that section of your motion. Having said that, I can go along with the the cuts. I can go along with the slight increases. That leaves us with, where do we get the 828,375? So just to let you know what I would do if and when this fails, because of the point I just made, I would make a motion that we just increase the, the contribution to revenue from the general, the surplus fund, whatever you want to call it, by that amount, that would have been my recommendation to zero out the tax increase anyway. So I'm putting on the table as part of my discussion, that concept. I don't think we can make this, zero this out the way you're suggesting it. And as an alternative to that, I would suggest down the road that we do it by increasing the mayor's contribution to revenue from the fund balance by the same amount, 828,375, but that's not a motion, obviously. So you can address what I have to say on this one, but thanks for your work on this one. As I said, I'm good with the cuts, my intention would have been to increase the mayor's suggested contribution to revenue from the fund balance by 1.2 million. So you found $450,000 in cuts, I thank you for that. And that's where I will leave it. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly. Counselor Laughlin.
Thank you, thank you. And, and thanks to the, the counselors that sat and put through most of the, the details behind all this, and the Counselor Fortell's strategy, I guess, in, in going to the, to previous accounts from the CAFERS that had not been used, and coming up with, it's probably a conservative way to look at some of those unspent funds over the last couple of years. My issue, a lot like, aside from what Counselor Testa was just speaking about, about, I don't know that we can actually do it, I have a problem with the principle of doing it. For the reason that the ordinances were, or created, or the charter says what it is, and that Counselor, Chairman Servoni spoke to earlier, it would put us in a huge, huge bind in the beginning of next year, when, when trying to go through the budget. But, and here's my hangup, I, the same, that same intent that created those ordinances and that charter and all that, that same intent is what makes me really hesitant. And, and I've never been a fan of increasing additional money from the, from the general fund, or from the fund balance. It's the same thing, because the money won't be there the same way next year, it's gone. It's, it's kind of a one-time thing. And sure, the WED money will reoccur, but that is supposed to be funding a specific type of balance. This is a one-shot deal to take it from the general fund, I know that's not this specific motion, but I just wanted to comment on what Counselor Testa was talking about. 7.4 million dollars already coming out of the general fund is already so much money. I know 1 million of that is, is really kind of kickback from the Board of Ed's surplus. And just, I'm just concerned on all those levels, I really wanted a 1%, I was hoping for additional state revenues. It didn't happen. I could, I could go up on the general fund, and it pains me to say that, but this is the year, if any year, a little bit, but a whole 1.2 million, it's hard. Or 800,000, whatever we're talking about, to, to go up that far, because, because the economy is so tough, because next year could be rough, rougher. You know, this year, we're making tough decisions based on a decent year. Next year, we're going to be making tougher decisions based on a bad year. And, and that's something I keep thinking about as it's out there, and I, I don't know. I'm not comfortable with, as it exists now, the second part. The first part, we found the cuts, I think we could divide the question and, and probably make those cuts. Is there room to cut more from the Board of Ed? Probably, I mean, we just found out today, right, Record Journal's reporting that they are going to end up owing the bus company under $330,000 versus the 1.3, that would have been the max in that negotiation. They had, they're already giving a million back, they committed a lot of money, almost a million, I think it was $900,000. But that was money that they, basically, so they, they would like to spend, or they want to spend, or they will spend. And I don't know that this is the year to necessarily do that, but even if they keep all of that committed money, that left them a surplus of over $770,000, if my memory serves me right, and I'm just kind of flying off the top of my head from what I remember that meant documentals presentation. Take 330 off that, another 100,000, there's still a couple hundred thousand dollars there. It's not 800,000 without going to the committed money, and, and that's hard. So I get it, so I'm, again, I appreciate the effort, I think the cuts are probably good things to even keep rolling in the future. That future budgets are made off of, of some of these cuts. Some of the specifics of where those lines come from, I don't know if it was necessary. Chairman Servoni, can you scroll up to the grid further, I have it on my screen, but just for the purposes of everybody else talking. You know, it mentions a little further too. You know, some of the transportation allowances, the overtime accounts. Those are, you might think of those as one-time type of expenses. But that they, you know, they ultimately, they, those fields of expenditures recur, reoccur. And I just get worried about, about being so specific about that, and I would trust the department heads to move the money around, as we, we often do, right, we're, they're always coming to us to move money around. So I have concerns about the specificity of the, the account number, but I don't know that we need to make it that specific. If we can just leave it up to the department heads, or they can just come to us later, maybe that's a question for, for Mr. Bose. If we need to be that specific in this case. So I know, I know that was a lot of stuff, thank you to, to those that worked on some of the details of this, but I have, I have major concerns about the flow of the second part.
Yeah, procedurally, so the, the mayor has presented a budget with all of these lines, the proposed cuts have to affect be directed at lines. Because that, that's how we have to budget, the budget has to address how all of the town's tax revenue is going to be spent. Next up is Counselor Fishby.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, working with a budget is very difficult, I, I don't know that, unless you've been on the council, you can appreciate how difficult it is to work with the budget, and, you know, with, with that, I really have to give a lot of credit to, you know, Counselor Shortell, who I got to think has been working on this every day since April 1 or thereabouts. We've exchanged a lot of information, a lot of ideas, so I just want to, I want to thank him, I think that, you know, the citizens of Connecticut, well, longer. Should, he deserves appreciation for, for the amount of work he's put into this. But the cap and non-recurring situation, I just want to focus on that. You know, there's 1.2 million dollars in there from projects that have been completed. And I think we have an opportunity to utilize that money for some things. I totally agree with, I think it was Counselor Testa's position about using that for operating expenses. That, that should not occur, because it just puts you in a hole. But there are things in that, in our regular budget, that by some vehicle can be shifted against that money. We've got a final payment on Tyler Mill, an acquisition of property. That's not a reoccurring expenditure. We've got, there's another final payment, it doesn't come to mind right now. We've got, in the Public Works budget, there's some large equipment. I think there's a dump truck, there's, there's a pickup truck, I think there's a, there may be a plow truck in there too, something like that. You know, those are expenditures that could be, we could use that money in cap and non for that. And, and one may say, well, you could only use it, that cap and non for, for land improvements. But I have to admit that there's really a conflict in the guidance that we're given in that regard, you know, Counselor Testa references the charter. And I, I recognize what the charter says, but we also have an ordinance. And, you know, Counselor Testa did speak about the sources of funding in that ordinance, and that's 46-6. And that, that talks about, you know, where the money comes from that goes into the fund. Was it, am I good? Okay. What we're talking about here tonight is the utilization of those funds. So there we must go to 46-8, which is titled Use of Fund. And it very clearly points us in two places, and that's the state statute and the charter. So I mean, I'll, I'll make note that the reference in this, in the ordinances to a wrong charter section, which can be addressed at some point. But 46-8 says, money shall be appropriated from the fund as the needs of the town demand, consistent with the provisions of said Chapter 108 and Section, what says right now is 3D of Section 4 of the Charter. When we look at the state statute, it says that the money can be used for acquisition, wait, I'll get to that in a second, capital. acquisition, wait, I'll get to that in a second, capital and non-recurring expenditures. The acquisition of any specific item of equipment, costs associated with a property tax reevaluation, which I believe there's a, I think it's a $45,000 expenditure in this budget for that. Costs associated with the preparation, amendment, or adoption of a plan of conservation and development, which is not before us today, but it's something to note because we did a few years ago spend about $70,000, I think, out of the, out of the regular budget for that. You know, part of the problem with the motion is, as far as I read it, and maybe I can ask councillor Shortell in his final iteration of this proposition, if there are any specific items of capital and non-recurring expenditure in the regular budget that you would attribute to the 1.2 million, if I may, Mr. Chairman, through you.
Go ahead.
That would be the question.
Thank you. There are, you referenced one of them. There were several. The Tyler Mill is one. We're paying off the Tyler Mill property we purchased in 2015. We're also paying off the Voag building. So that accounted for over $200,000. I have the exact amount. It was in an earlier iterate. That's why you see a typo. It's the type, I mean, it's a sentence at the bottom. I had taken that all out. There are some dump trucks. There's a dump truck, a plow truck, a plow in the Public Works budget. So all of that was initially in here, and then I took it out really because I, I felt like, you know, do we buy trucks every, you know, to councillor, to vice chair Laffin's point, do we buy, do we buy these types of things every year? You know, that was kind of where I was struggling. And we all, we all talked about that, I know, offline too. We kind of went back and forth on that. So it, it felt cleaner to just to try to take it out. But I, I mean, there are things, there are things in the budget like that. The question is, you know, how often do we buy that? I don't know the answer. Like, with those trucks, you know, are we literally buying a truck every year? That would mean we would have, you know, 30 trucks. I mean, maybe we are. We have a lot of trucks, you know, so I don't know. So, but, but there's also, to finish answering your question, councillor Fishby, I mean, there are also, I did go through in a separate spreadsheet and I added up most, if not all, of the capital expenditures in every department's budget. So everything, you know, copiers, I mean, everything. And that did amount to about $800,000. But again, to vice chair Laffin's point, you can look through any of these budgets, those things are in there. Now, are they in there to that extent? I didn't do that analysis. I thought of it. And, you know, I thought of it last week. It'd be great to look in the last few budgets and do a comparative analysis, how much capital is in there for capital expenditures. But I'm at the point now where I don't even want to look at the book anymore. So that would involve looking at the book and opening it up and doing it. So I didn't do that. That would be maybe next year. So I don't know if that answers your question or not, but.
Just, that was a pretty good answer. But just so that I know, are you proposing as part of this package that there's 471,625 utilization of that 1.2? Is that, am I reading that correctly?
The 471,625, it, that's, it's 450. That's, those are the spending reductions from the first page. Those are not the the capital items. Those are just the spending reductions. The capital items that I took out are, are something like 500. I don't know. I have to look up the amount, but there's something like 500 or 600,000, I think, if you add them up.
So where, I mean, is, or are you as part of this motion saying to the administration, there's 1.2 figure, I want you to spend up to the amount that we get to zero tax increase? Or I don't see the amount that you're looking to attribute against the 1.2? That's, that's essentially what I'm looking for.
Right. Well, it's not in here because I think that was the whole point is I, I didn't know. So if you look at the budget.
You cut out again. Your, your, your microphone is.
Sorry. Is that better? Oh, I don't know if that's better.
No, it's better. But like, the last 90 seconds of what you said didn't come through.
Oh. I was just saying that I, in the budget book, we have things like the CRRA fund where you can see clearly items that are, capital items that are being purchased out of CRRA, which I felt like, I don't want to touch CRRA. I want to leave it alone. I prefer to let the mayor make those decisions. But I also didn't feel, to councillor Fishby's point, I didn't feel we had, do we have the authority to go in and do the same thing and just say, use the cap and non savings? I don't think we do. So that was the problem. That's why I didn't list these things. You know, that's why I didn't suggest we go into the Tyler Mill purchase and say, well, this is the last payment for Tyler Mill. Let's use cap and non reserves. I don't, because the cap and non reserves are outside of the budget. I didn't think we had the ability to do that legally. So that's why I didn't do it.
So perhaps that's a question for the Law Department. How do we access the 1.2 million, if I may, through Mr. Chairman?
If, if I may, Mr. Chairman?
Please.
Jim Bowes here. Very excellent discussion by Mr. Fishby and, and Mr. Shortell here. With regards to the cap and non recurring fund, I believe, and councilman Chris straightened me out if I'm not seeing it the way you're trying to propose it. And Chris was, in fairness, he was very good to get me a very early version of this today, which has been changed a little bit. So Chris, if I go off mark here, please, get me back straight. But right now, what we have before us looks like reductions to the general fund of about $451,625. That's including adding a couple back to red star boarders and pre-human resources for the unemployment taxes, et cetera, et cetera. Anyway, now, the attempt to zero tax increases, I think Chris put it very nicely here, the 1,280,000 minus that 451,625. So that remainder of the 828,375, this is the amount of the reduction. And I will straighten this out when it comes down to motions tomorrow. Once you guys vote on how you'd like me to get, I'll get all this out to you probably late tomorrow afternoon in the form of motions. But the motion, part of that motion would be to reduce in the general fund. I believe it's page 23. And I don't have my, I have my book there, but frankly, I agree with Chris. I don't even want to open it up again. But it's the line item where there's one line item that says cap and non recurring. I think it's page 23. And that's got 1.8 million in it. So that would be reduced by that 828,375. So that, if that's the way that everything gets adopted, next fiscal year, we will only transfer, and I'm just gonna round, please, $1 million to the cap and non recurring fund out of the general fund. And 1.8 million dollars is going to stay in the general fund from the total pilot from electric on the revenue side. So that's how, so in other words, you did not utilize, now addressing councilman Craig's question, you did not get up to the 1.2 million dollars of additional funds in the cap and non recurring fund, but you put a bite into it by about $828,375. And that's, I, I hope I explained that clearly.
Yes, that, that certainly got me to where I at least preliminarily needed to be. So I guess the concern as expressed by councillor Laffin is that 828,375, what is it going to be attributed to? Which is an open question. Is that fair to say?
I, I think Tom, I think, I'm sorry, councilman Laffin's, vice chairman Laffin's summary was accurate. Next year, I don't know if this is a tool or a mechanism that the town should be using every year. I will admit, and I've had this conversation with many of you, I think I even put it writing in one of the answers to one of the sets of questions that I set out. I don't have a huge problem doing it this one time. However, you know, like, like an addict, we can't get ourselves, we can't go down that road every year with it. And if we're only going to utilize that 800,000, and Mr. Laffin, correct, next year, '21, '22, let's just say the numbers stay about the same, we're going to get an electric pilot revenue of 1.8 million dollars. Well, we're, if we're going to spend 1.8 million dollars on that, transfer that out to the cap and non recurring fund from the general fund, that's $800,000 more that's got to be made up as compared to the 2021 year.
So.
It's something that you don't, it's something you don't want to do every single year.
No, and I totally agree and understand, and I'm a little uncomfortable because of, you know, that we are very fortunate in our town to have the ability to have the cap and not. You know, I look at other towns and they're struggling to do capital expenditures. And, you know, trying to figure out, and we on average have about $2 million every year that goes into this account, you know, that's for certain things. And I got a problem. I mean, I think I would be more comfortable with taking a little bit more from reserves, maybe cutting the 828 in half. You know, maybe only do 428,375 from the cap and non, and then 400,000 from reserves would get us there. I think it would be, would lessen the blow. I'm just throwing that out there right now. So I thank you, Mr. Chairman. I thank you for me getting, being able to get up to speed. So thank you.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, on, on councilman Craig's points, I do agree with you. The cap and non recurring fund is a beautiful item. It really is. I don't mean to sound dramatic about that. I live in a town where we just sold, over the last several years, $11 million in bonds for roads and sidewalks and drainage. And that's been like an albatross of debt service on our neck because they didn't put a dime in the roads for many, many years. So, you know, I agree with you, Craig, 100% on that. However, I do have to agree with vice chairman Laffin when he said that, you know, we're already using 7.4 million dollars to balance this budget. And I know a million of that is from some of the, due to the closures of the schools, and I get that. But it's still 7.4 million. If you're going to ask me which way of votes, too, that I would prefer, frankly, I'm not crazy about either of them, don't get me wrong. But I would say, I would, I would go along the lines of what I believe Mr. Shortell, I'm sorry, Chris, forgot your name. Well, Mr. Shortell was trying to propose, I believe, in this, in this document. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Next up, councillor Zandry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I was gonna, I was gonna start one way, and now I'm gonna start another. So I'm gonna start now by asking Mr. Bowes a question. You just identified that we're using 7.4 million dollars. I, I would like to know, when was the last time we actually spent everything that we used?
As far as spent in one fiscal year that was budgeted?
So you're identifying that you're taking 7.4 million dollars from the designated reserves and we're using it. We're using it. We never use it. We put it into the budget, we designate it for use, and we have never used it.
Yes, we have. We've used it the last three years.
All right.
Last fiscal year.
Let me quantify what I'm saying because this gets twisted. I've done seven budgets now. I've been following it for 17 years. We allocate it. We never use it all. And I sit down with you, Jim. We go over the numbers. I put it in a spreadsheet. Every councillor has gotten it. Because I've sent it to everybody. And the last budget, we used 140,000 of it. We used the budget before, 1.5 million dollars of it. We don't use it. We don't consume it. We allocate it. We get it ready in case we need it, and we never use it. I, I have a big problem every year that we say that we use it. We allocate it, we assign it, we, we take it away from possibly being used for anything else. We never consume it all. And, and I have a big problem with the way that that is always portrayed. Because if the average person hears that we, we used 7.4 million dollars from savings, that's all they hear. They don't understand that it's been pulled in to leverage and it never gets consumed. The largest consumption I have going back 17 years was 2005, 2006, where we actually spent 1.7 of 6.9 of the reserves. We pulled in 6.9 to utilize if necessary, and we actually spent 1.7 million of that. I want, I want all of us to remember that, and I want the people to understand that. We allocate to balance the budget. If we tick that number to 8.2 and balance the budget and don't utilize it all and put money back, we completely move the needle back. And, and that's my concern every year because we keep saying the same thing. I, I want to make sure that every single taxpayer hears that. Because it, first off, budgeting to this volume is, is never, you're never going to hit the target. We've done an awesome job over the years. But there are two things to remember with this particular year. And so far, most of the conversation's been right on target. We do not want to have regular expenditures coming out of the savings account. Because that means you have to pull more out of and actually utilize in a future year not to bang forward additional monies that you're otherwise going to be getting out of savings because eventually you'll run the savings dry. But this particular year, we are going to return money to this account, more so than what we took out. We allocated, and Mr. Bowes can correct me if I'm wrong, in this current budget that we're in right now, that's not going to close for another 28 days or so, we have designated $6 million in from the reserves. Now, is that correct, Mr. Bowes?
Yes, I believe it is.
Okay, so what will more than likely happen based on the amount of budgets that are not being spent now? There are definitely budgets that are over. Health Department, I expect they're going to blow their budget because they're doing a lot of stuff. There's a lot of money that we haven't spent. So just for the sake of argument, last year, we utilized 140,000 of the 6.2 that we actually designated. Let's make it a nice, small and round number, $1 million. If we surplus $1 million from this current budget that closes in 28 days, it goes unspent for buses that didn't get, that didn't get done, didn't get spent on for the schools. It was a mild winter. Some of the overtime didn't get utilized, whatever the story might be. We are going to take the $6 million that we allocated and put it back. And then we're going to add the million-dollar surplus on top of it. It might be more than that. Some of the numbers, some of the, some of the budgets that are, that are 28 days from being closed, bills and invoices will come in for the next 60, are going to have surplus dollars in them. That's some of the items that have been cut already in the future budget based on some of the historical numbers. So I want everybody to remember that, that even if we can't do some of the discussion that's happened here, that we could do that increase of the mayor's contribution from this general designated reserve money inbound. Because we've done it every year. And we, and like I said, the worst year we ever spent was 1.7 million of it. That's the most we ever spent. And the years after, when we had to do the correction because we actually burned some of the savings, the increases to the budget, so the last three years, we've done it. 1.4 was actually spent, a 4.2 allocated. 1.5 was actually spent of 7.2 allocated. And 140,000 was spent of 6.2 allocated. The increases in the budget were 2.5%, 1.63, and 2.44. We are not going down the road of next year we'll have to come out and do an increase of five percent. Next year, we're going to have to do an increase of eight percent. It's not going that way, because we are not taking this money and putting it against regular day-to-day operational expenses. We're looking to subvert some of the money that's coming from capital expenditures and then cutting other costs. And if we designate another million dollars in from these designated reserves, it is a matter of simply not spending it like we do any other year, and we don't have to increase the taxes this year. So fundamentally, if we've got all this anxiety over whether or not we can pickle around in all these different budgets and make the line items work, you can correct it by just designating another million dollars that will very, very likely go unused, because historically for seventeen years, we haven't even used half of what we've designated, not even half. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Up next, Counselor Marone.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of quick points. You know, we talked about the future, no one could predict the future. A year ago, we had no idea that we'd be in the situation that we're in now with businesses closed, you know, and potential threats to the grand list. So, I mean, next year could be awful, could be worse than it is now. We could be headed for a great depression, or you know, the, things could turn around and America could reopen and we could enter, enter boom times. I mean, I, I think it's, I think it's foolish to try to base our actions now on what we think the future's going to bring. If, I feel like, you know, so this is, Councilman Zandry said that this is his seventh budget, I think. This is my fifth. And I would say that for the past four times, all we've heard is doom and gloom from the administration as far as where the economy's going and what's going to happen. Now, this hasn't been a great year for Connecticut for a lot of reasons, but for most of America, the past couple of years have been really economically profound. So, the other thing is, there's two sides to this whole question about spending and, and revenue. You, you know, we always consider what are we going to need to do to get the revenue. There's also the, the spending side that we could look into. I mean, there's a lot of things that I would describe as discretionary in this budget. We spent a lot of time talking about essential services. And I started today to make a list, and I said, you know, in the spirit of the, the afternoon, I think, I think what councilman, what my fellow counselors have come up with for a plan was better than a list of discretionary spending, but there is a lot in there that's sort of things that we could do without if we had to. You know, we couldn't do the pool because there was enough money. I understand the rationale, but I think there's a lot of other things that we could dispense with if we needed to make up some, some funds. And I'd also like to attach myself to the comments that Mr. Zandry made with regard to the, the surplus. It's a little bit misleading to claim that we go seven million dollars into our reserves every year, and we do. But then most of the money's kicked forward to the next budget the next year. So it's not new money, it's the same money that we've been kicking down the road in an effort to balance the budget. So, I wish that when we talked about the money that we're taking out of the, out of the reserves, we talked about the money that we were actually taking out to use and not the number that we're using to just balance the budget. So we might budget seven million dollars from it, which is accurate, but we're not pouring on spending the seven million dollars. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Mayor wants to cut in.
Yeah, I find a lot of this very troublesome. I've had a few years watching this, and we never seem to learn. Every year, there's reserves that go into the budget. But that means taxpayers are saving money, because if we didn't have those reserves, that money would have to come from taxes.
Or spending.
Year that we don't have money restored, that's when there will be a tax increase, unless you cut services. If everyone wants to be accountable for the services that get cut, then fine. And I suspect no one's going to want to be accountable for the fact that we don't have public works doing something, or we don't have the health department doing something, or whatever the issue might be. We can, we can identify, oh yeah, there was seven million dollars, we cut it down from seven million, because money did get used up and we lost a triple A credit rating. People who know about how these budgets work, watch. And the minute you depart from something that would be an acceptable way of handling public money, then their red light goes on and they say, oh, no, we're not going to back it to that extent. We're at seven point four million. I hope we don't have to spend that, because every dollar we have to spend to that will mean a tax increase next year. Will that money get replaced? Right now, we can think, oh gee, everything could turn around quickly, or it might not. What do the odds say? We've got over half million people in Connecticut unemployed. How quickly do you think they're all going to be employed again? We're in serious times, and it's not time to play games with public money and figure, oh, we'll, we'll get more money than we expect. We have people now who can take three months to pay their tax bill. We're not going to be sure what's going to be happening. I would expect a lot of businesses may not be able to pay anything. I know businesses that can't start up because education is a question mark. They do all their ancillary work for higher education. They can't do a thing. They won't know until they know what colleges are coming in. These are serious times. So we're very risky at seven point four million. We're, we're above, way above where we'd like to be. And now we talk about increasing that. Now we talk about ripping the capabilities out of the cap and non that allows us to do capital projects. Every town in the state could have a cap and non project. All they have to do is take the money they receive in annual tax payments from utility installations, be it EverSource, be it Avengrid, be it whatever. The South Central Regional Water Authority, they could take that money and start their own cap and non, not use it for operational costs and have something for capital needs, but they don't do it. This town was smart enough years ago to start that. And now we're going to make that inoperable, because if you take the money once, that creates the gap for the next year. And from then on, it becomes a nice place to just grab money, and you have no program anymore. What are the people dependent upon? I think they've depended upon, the people and businesses in this town have depended upon our approach, our, it's been council and mayor, our approach to how to responsibly deal with public money. And I think that is a proven track record, year after year. Now we're in tough times, and we're going to change the formula that has worked, really. So you want to adopt the state's program? What other communities' program would you like to adopt? By what's being stated, you're making a good effort to replicate what others have tried, and in my opinion, has not come close to the success we've had in Wallingford. Be careful what you wish for, because the traps are both known and unknown, and they aren't fun.
Counselor Tada, you're on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, starting out with this, I I wasn't looking so much at the revenue side, I was looking more for savings, because I agree, I'm, I don't think we want to to deplete our savings for recurring expenses, so I, I agree with that. So I was looking for one percent across the board, because I was thinking that in this economic crisis that we're currently in, I think everyone, you know, in our town has really been asked to, to give up something. Our businesses are giving up. You know, our businesses are giving up money, our, their employees are giving up money, people are losing their jobs, people are tightening their budgets at home. And so, to me, it seemed reasonable to say, can you save one percent? I, I think if somebody had asked, you know, any of us in our household budgets, can you save one percent, we could do it. You know, in our business, if you would ask me if we can save one percent because we're in an economic crisis, we could do it. And I didn't think one percent would be too hard to find and not affect services too much. However, then we went through, you know, and, and I spoke with, with some fellow counselors and, you know, listened to whatever I had to say, and it seems like, you know, maybe a different approach was to look at specific departments and what has been unspent in previous years. And so that, that's kind of what got us to where we are. But obviously, those cuts are not enough to get us to the zero. So then we find out during the budget hearings that there's this one point two million dollars sitting in cap and non that's not, not really being used. It was either left over from, from completed projects. Actually, I think that was really where most of it was from. And so then I kind of looked at that, and thought, well, that's kind of like found money. So the one point two million is sitting there. And it would be very easy to just say, well, let's use that, and then, you know, it's, we're just going to put that towards it. It's a one-time thing. I understand. These are one-time things. I understand we don't want to do this every year, and I agree with that. However, I think when you're in an economic crisis, you do things that maybe you wouldn't do in a normal year. So I know this is my first budget, so nobody knows exactly maybe where I would stand on this, but I do agree that I don't want to be spending savings for recurring expenses. But this one point two I kind of see as found money. And, you know, you save money for a rainy day, you save money for a catastrophe, and I don't know what more of a catastrophe it could be than sixteen percent unemployed. So I am, I am very adamant that we do not raise taxes this year, and, and I understand, you know, the arguments about not using this, but I'm, I'm looking at this one point two million and thinking, that's, that's found money. Now, now the issue comes in as to how, how we use that. And I think that's where things are getting a little bit confusing, and Kelsa Chortel's been, you know, doing a lot of work trying to figure out how, how we actually get to use some of that, not even, not even the whole one point two, just some of it. So that's, that's, I think, where the issue's coming in. So, you know, and then you hear, well, maybe we just use the reserves, because it's easier than trying to figure out how, you know, by the charter, by the ordinance, how we get to use that one point two. But Mr. Boes said he prefers we use the, the one point two. Well, not even the whole one point two, but the money that's in, extra money that's sitting in cap and non. So, you know, based on Mr. Boes' professional opinion, I would, I would much prefer to, to take it from there and figure out how we can take it from there than to use the general fund. But I, I also appreciate Counselor Zandry's analysis of that, so. Um, I guess that's just where I stand, and where, you know, just a little bit of background on how, how we got to, to this, to this plan. We, we spent a lot of time on this, and it's, uh, this is certainly much more involved than, than I had anticipated. You know, every time I, I kind of think I have a great idea, you know, you hear like, well, you can't do it because of this, or you can't use that money for this, or this money has to sit, sit there, and, you know, all valid. But I think the, the one argument that maybe wasn't as valid was when I told, I was, I was told, you know, jokingly, that I was kind of looking at this too much like, like a business, and that's, this isn't how government works. And, you know, I wonder if maybe, maybe government needs to work a little bit more like a business, and I, I don't think that. I, I think that when you're, you, when you're in a crisis, if you're a business and you have some savings and you need to use those savings to, to help out the, the people who need it, that, that that's the year to do it, so. So that's where I stand on this, and hopefully we can figure out the logistics of using that cap and non money to to get us to the zero. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You know, when, when, when you're in business and, and you, you use savings to offset expenses, then it's your independent effort that, that can then go generate more revenue to, to make up for the lost savings. And the only way we do, we make up for lost savings is by raising taxes. Using found money to offset a tax increase is a, a pretty sure way to make sure in the coming year, you have to increase revenue. And the sure way to do that is by increasing taxes. I think the way to avoid a tax increase is to cut out enough expenses, because otherwise, you, you're facing you, you're facing spending that money next year, so you have to raise taxes to come up with it. So I, I think that's the difference. I don't, I don't. I, I think that there are many other ways that private industry can, can share advice with government. So I, I'm not going to, to say that that's not a fair thing to say. I think, I think there are many ways that private industry can contribute to how government operates. But when it comes to spending money or, or having to spend money and having to raise money, taxes is, is the way that gets affected every year. Uh, next up is Counselor Morganstein.
Um, no, I'm actually all set. I'm still just listening. Thank you.
Then, next up is Counselor Testa.
Thank you. Did I hear correctly that Mr. Boes feels we can use part of the one leftover one point two cap and reoccurring fund money as revenue in the new budget if we choose to? As Counselor Tada, Tada just seemed to indicate. Is that what I, is that where we're at right now? Just want to make sure I understand.
What, you were, you were asking me, Ben, Jim Boes here?
Sure.
But the mechanism to do it is through reducing the amount of the budget in the general fund that you would transfer to the cap and non recurring fund by this, by the amount that Mr. Chortel put forward on his PowerPoint spreadsheet, the eight hundred and twenty-eight thousand and change.
I'm sorry, I did not understand that. Say that again, please.
The general fund budget, you've got a, a revenue line item for one point eight million for the electric pilot, and you have a, an expenditure line item for the same one point eight million for the funding of cap and non recurring. If you reduce that by the amount that, just that line item, the expenditure line item, that we transfer to the cap and non recurring fund by the amount that's still needed to get to the zero increase, it's about the eight hundred and twenty thousand that was on Mr. Chortel's PowerPoint presentation. So you would read, so how you get to that zero percent increase in the general fund is to reduce that expenditure line item by the eight hundred and twenty-eight thousand. That's how, basically, so, so that's how you end up utilizing eight hundred and twenty-eight thousand of the one point two, which I believe also was asked by, you know, in, in another way, but by Councilman.
I, 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 I get it, and I, I appreciate that. I, my question wasn't, wasn't clear. I understand that that would be in practice, how you would accomplish it on paper. No, I appreciate that. I, my original objection was that I didn't think we were allowed to do that by ordinance and by charter. That's why I asked, have you said that you think we can do it? I'm not asking how physically you would do it on paper. I could figure that one out myself.
Yeah, my, I'm sorry, Councilman, I, I thought you were asking more of the operational aspects of it. And back when I've read this, and I've gone back to it again just about a month or so ago, just going back to the original, the original ordinance is what created cap and non recurring. It gives certain maximums that have to be, that can be utilized of general fund monies for funding the cap and non recurring fund. And there's nothing in there that says, you know, it has to be dollar for dollar. Believe I was asked that a few years back during the budget cycle as well, and I'm pretty sure my answer was the same. Now, we don't, uh, and in my response to, I believe to Mr. Fishbein and Mr. Chortel, what's that? Obviously, that's something that you don't want to do every year, because, you know, you're going to end up getting yourself in a hole with your, your infrastructure projects. But, you know, I was asked how, you know, i- in my view, you're doing the same thing if you put a whole bunch of what I consider recurring items and charging the cap of non recurring fund. I think that's a violation of the ordinances more than what we're other than what we're trying to do here, or what has been talked about here. In other words, in a draft that I saw. In a draft that I saw of items that were, you know, to be utilized in Cap and On to be extracted. Or cut from the general government budget were things like the revaluation. That's an operational cost. That's a recurring cost. The same thing with some of the vehicles. We do have, you know, operational recurring. Items of a capital nature such as vehicles and rolling stock, et cetera, et cetera. In my view, that's not, that is. That that does not. That does not qualify under the definition of non-recurring. You're smiling.
Yeah, well, I mean, that's kind of been my point. Um. I, well, let's just, let's just say for argument's sake. It's determined that. Per charter and per ordinance, we are allowed. To reallocate. 858,000 dollars of of the 1.2 million dollars that's being referenced as. Surplus cap funds right now. Let's say we're allowed to do that, and we do it. Is it, are we, isn't that, is that separate from? From taking. That money out of the anticipated. Electric division pilot. Contribution to revenue. Is it not? Or am I missing from the beginning where? My colleagues are are proposing we get this 858,000 dollars from.
The revenue, the revenue from electric will still come in at 1.8 million dollars. We're only gonna send a million dollars of that to, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm I'm sorry, and I'm rounding liberally. I I apologize.
That's okay.
Be spending a million dollars of that cash to the cap and non-recurring fund. Therefore, the 828,000 dollar net revenue between those two items is achieved. Which gets you to the the number that was on Mr. Shore-Tel's spreadsheet for in his PowerPoint.
Right, so that brings me back to my first point and my first argument. So where, where. I'm I'm sorry if I'm I'm blanking on this. Where's the 1.2 million dollars? That Counselor Todd referenced as surplus leftover cap and not recurring unspent money?
I'm sorry, go ahead. I I apologize.
Did I misunderstand that discussion?
That is in the cap and non-recurring fund. Those are funds that, uh, for example, have been budgeted. The project's completed and not fully spent. So over time, those funds accumulate. So by uh depriving that fund of 800,000, 828,000 in Mr. Shore-Tel's spreadsheet. Next fiscal year, if everything else goes the way it's budgeted, which it. But let's just say, let's spend it. We will get all the revenue in from electric, of course, but we don't, let's say we spend it all as well. Then that will draw that 1.2 million dollars down to about 400,000. That's what I was referring to in in in. An answer I gave to uh Mr. Fishbein, I believe, one of Mr. Fishbein's questions. So, of course, now, next year, uh, when we close the, actually, when we close the book this fiscal year. We will be sitting down with um our town engineer and our works director to go over these projects. That uh you folks have seen through the budget process here to see which of those projects are completed and close those down as well. So that's, you know, that that's a moving number.
I guess I will ask my colleagues, because I can see your faces. Would you all, when any of you who. If I'm the only one who's still not getting this, please nod. If you all get this and I'm the only one who's not getting this, go like this right now. Jesus, I must be an idiot, because I just had it explained to me two different ways. I was just told we have a million two that is unspent currently in the cap and not recurring fund. And we could take. So we could take 800,000 out of that. Then I was told we could take 800,000 out of the 1.8 that's going to be added this year from the electric pilot. It just sounds to me like it was explained to me, we can get it from two places. I'm really sorry if I'm missing this.
If I, oh, I'm sorry, go right ahead, Mr. Chairman.
I'm gonna try to. I'm gonna try to simplify without oversimplifying it. So wha- what's happening is. Of the 1.8. That's coming from the pilot. That would be effectively diverted to the general fund. The, of the 1.8, 828 would be effectively diverted to the general fund. The way that we would then correspondingly access the 1.2 million in in the cap and non-fund. Is to, of the 1.2 million, spend it on. On capital expenditures that would otherwise be spent in the cap and non-fund. So the 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 effect would be to wash each other. So you you'd end up depleting that 1.2. By 828,000 dollars. Does that?
So I guess when I think of it as. There's a 1.2 unused balance in there, and this year, if we never touched it, we'd be adding 1.8 to it. We should have 3 million. I'm not understanding it correctly, then.
Well, I mean, we'd be bringing, we'd be bringing 1.8 millions in in revenue from the electric pilot. Well, it's actually coming from the general fund. Go from the electric division to the general fund to the cap and on recurring fund. But you'd be spending 1.8 million as well, or less.
Right. On top of the 1.2 that's still in there, that can be reallocated.
But if you do it that, if if you're doing it the way that I proposed, you are. You are reducing the amount of the, that the reserves in the cap and non-recurring fund. And alleviating one year's pressure on the ability in the general fund by doing that, rather than throwing. Costs and charging the cap and non-recurring bookkeeping fund for items that, in my view, and I'm sure many others would consider recurring.
That's fine.
I think we're saying the same thing, Councilman Vin, to try to get. To what folks are trying to get to, which is a 0%. And I think if, if you folks. Tonight, sometime tonight, we hours tomorrow morning, whenever you're done, get around to this. Tomorrow, I'm gonna send you the motions, and I think the motions are gonna, like I do every year since I've been here, the 15 budgets. And when I show you, when you get those through the town clerk, uh, I think when you read through those motions, I could get my. I think you might see it a little bit clearer.
I apologize, my mental block. I guess I'm just continually getting confused by the references to. A res, uh, an unused 1.2 million dollars. The unused, that's already still in there now.
That's correct. So now, if everything goes according.
Uses me when we, when my colleagues are referring to using that. And then on top of that, then we talk about reducing the amount of the new input from the electric.
It's one or the other, Ben. It's one or the other. It can't be both. It should be doubling up. That's correct. That's correct.
All right, well, whatever. Okay, I I don't know. I would be more inclined as regardless, you know, even in in the face of the mayor's comments. I would be more inclined to want to increase the the contribution from reserves. Because I don't want to see us pulling back from from needed infrastructure work that we we. We schedule and plan for on a regular basis. If you were to tell me that we can use unspent money that was left over from projects we did, we completed. And not reallocate that money to newer projects. And if you were to tell me that's where it came from, I would be okay with it. But I'm not on board with, on that understanding. So I'm gonna go along with this. I'm fine. I'll, I'll go along with this. One way or the other. I want to see that 858,000 dollars. Applied to revenue, so the tax increase is zero. If this is how we achieve it, and we're all in agreement on that. That's a magic day, and I will go along with that. Thank you. I have a feeling within a few days, we're all gonna find out that. There was a little bit of something to what I thought.
Counselor Laughlin.
Thank you. Um, so my comments, I, and then when I was saying like, I I kind of get, I think I get it, but I, that doesn't mean. That it shouldn't continue to be explained until you or everybody else gets it. And so my comments are kind of tying. I was gonna say this anyway. The, I don't look at it, I can't look at it as found money. Uh, the 1.2 million dollars. If we take. 108, 20, 128,000 dollars of the 1.2 million dollars, and we look at that as found money. If we. Got that into our household, let's say, that would be, that'd be saying like, okay. This year, I'm gonna spend 69,000 dollars a month. That's the 828 divided by 12. When the, I'm gonna spend the 69,000 dollars a month to pay my heating bills. Windfall, preheat for the year. Next year, now I have to find a way in my income stream to pay for my heating bills. But if I use the 828,000 dollar found money. To buy a new furnace because something happened to it, or I wanted a new one, and it's all said and done and paid. Then I don't have to worry about how we're gonna pay for future expenses. I think the fact that this money, this 1.2 million dollars is coming from where it's coming. It it would be a misuse of a windfall to use it in any account other than where it is now. I think we would be more responsible to use it in, like, the pool. Or additional, these additional projects that end up in the fund to alleviate some of the burden. That goes into this fund, like these extra things, um, or so we don't have to bond as much. And like that. Um, if we trans, if we use the 828 into this, into this fund. It would reduce this year's dependency on the tax revenue, right? But if we do that this year. Then that fund next year, when we're going to look at the budget, starts. 828,000 dollars less. You know, we're to, we're doing a 1 point, whatever percent increase. Well, next year, are we okay with basically. Just giving a 1.2% increase off the new amount based on the revenue. And I don't, that's where I'm getting hung up. We basically would be rebooting that fund. It's a recurring fund. And it may pay for things that are non-recurring, like a truck. We don't have to buy a truck next year. But we always use, I'm using that amount, we always use 1 million dollars to buy trucks. And to buy computers and to buy whatever. So now we're saying, we're just gonna use. 250,000 dollars, not even, to buy those things for next year. Or we have to raise the taxes to replenish it, because it's a one-time use sort of deal here. And that's where I keep getting concerned and. You know, if we had, we could have gone to the general fund, as we've discussed for the past, how many years has it been? Counselor Zander was saying, seven years we've been doing this. Uh, he and I at least. If we had done that seven years ago, and or the years after, in any sort of combination. We wouldn't be able to even talk about doing this right now. So while I appreciate Mr. Bose's, this is how I would do it, or yes, we can. I still don't know that that makes it okay to do it. For the same reason. It's the same thing as the the charter and the ordinances that don't allow us to spend this pool of money. It's the same thing. It's the same intent. Whoever, all the counselors and charter revision people. That that allowed and made amendments and did the ordinances and charter stuff over here, they did it with this purpose in mind. And now we're kind of looking at this extra little pool as a loophole. But they created those charter, that those amendments or those restrictions so that we wouldn't get in that trap. And yeah, thi- this would be a complete one-off. And Counselors Andrea said that in other years. And so, do you want a zero so badly this year versus next year? 100% sure. Do you want to want off so badly that you'll do it this year, and then let's roll the dice on what happens next year? I don't know. I don't know where I am on that. And 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 I've been pretty consistent. On that recurring cost issue. And again, right, we're not gonna buy that computer next year. But we always buy X amount of dollars in computers every year. Or we are always trying to buy, if we don't buy a fire truck, let's say we, we're all done. We got enough fire trucks this year. We're buying police cars. Or buying a bucket truck. Where that money is always being used for the same type of thing. And that's, that's my concern with the found money. Um, and I don't know Counselor Test or anybody else, if that kind of explains. How I view it and why I I I trip over it. I want, I want a zero. And I mean, like, I mean, I'm looking at it, like, oh, can we, can we do this? And Bose just said it. But like, I just, I can't. I can't get my head around that, and then what we would have to do next year. And that, and that bothers me. So I'm not, I'm not ready to sign on for that right now. That's it. Thanks.
Chairman, if I, if I may.
Yes.
I agree with Vice Chairman Laughlin. Very much. But I was asked to try to, you know, make some options here. So that's why, you know, I expressed. The uh, the option that I think works the best as far as that achievement of the 0%. Increase. But I do agree with you, because it's very simple. If we don't. Uh, i- if we use revenue streams, you know, just, you know, lump sum once, you know, one time. You gotta make that up in a future year, usually the very next year. Uh, sometimes it's not a doubling up. But because it all depends on what's going to happen during the fiscal year. And we don't know that, sitting here tonight. And nobody's. There's no crystal ball. We don't. Philosophically, I think, I think, Mr. Laughlin, you are, you're correct, and I I do agree with you. So with that said, I'll shut up.
Counselor Todd.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Mr. Bose, I just wanted to clarify and hope maybe this will help Counselor Testa. The 1.2 million that I was referring to that's in Cap and Not, the on, what I referred to as found money. That is leftover money from projects that were completed, and then they had leftover money. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so I I don't know, Counselor Testa, that clarifies that view. So, so the money that that is budgeted in Cap and On for. Projects that we're gonna do in this coming year, that doesn't get, that's not affected at all by this. So we budgeted, if I could, well, I could find the page, but. We budgeted for. It looks like 1,830,000 um for the coming year. That doesn't get touched if we touch this 1.2 million. Is that correct, Mr. Bose?
That's correct. That is correct.
Okay, so, so that, that's why I kind of refer to that as found money, because I don't think it, it doesn't affect any. It doesn't affect any of the the projects that are in the budget for this coming year. Nothing, nothing gets cut from there. Um, so everything that's that's on page 84 still happens. But there's this 1.2 million. That, you know, we we kind of stumbled upon that's sitting there. And I guess. The reason why I don't have any issue with using that is because. I don't know what would happen to that if we, if we don't use. I I guess maybe down the road, we might. We might use that for another capital project. Um, I don't know who decides that. Do we decide that? Um, you know, does the mayor maybe decide that? But it's not, it's not affecting this budget at all by using it. Um, you know, I understand Counselor Laughlin said, well, maybe we could use that, you know, down the road for a bigger project, you know. You know, I'm, I'm sure we could, but we could also use that right now, in my opinion, because it, it's sitting there and I think if no other year, this is the year. And, and so while I was looking at bigger cuts this year to try to get to the zero, you know, I, I kind of, I saw this and got excited because I think this is, you know, we can reduce the cuts and we can use this one time. Um, also in regards to what Counselor Zandry was talking about before, there's I, and I, I don't know this for a fact, but based on our budget carries and based on what some of the department has told us, I do think we're going to see savings from the pandemic. I think there were departments that, that could have substantial savings um, because of that. And that's going to get put back into the general fund. Now, we don't know right now what that number is. But again, to Counselor Zandry's point, you know, there could be money going in that, you know, it, we could use and we just don't exactly know what that number is yet. So um, I, I think I have a problem with the, with the argument of, you know, but next year, what if? We don't know next year. We, we don't, we only know this year. We know the data we have right now. We know the statistics of unemployment right now. We know the economic crisis right now. We know, you know, this is a, a very good budget, in my opinion. But people are hurting and they, 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 I think we owe it to the town to not raise their taxes right now. And if this 1.2 million can be used for that, I mean, I don't see any better way to use that, honestly. Um, and so I, I hope, I hope that clarifies that, that 1.2 million I was talking about. Um, that, that's all I have now. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, Mr. Mr. Chairman, if I may, just to uh, focus on that point just for a second. In a cap and non recurring fund budget, you're going to have a revenue stream. We're going to have to change this with motions if this is the way the majority of the council wishes to go. We're going to have to change the revenues in the cap and non recurring fund as well. One revenue will be utilization of fund balance or reserves from cap and non recurring fund, 828,000 dollars. Grounding, obviously. The second revenue item will be the revenue stream from the electric pilot, which is about a million dollars. So your total revenues are going to be 1.8 million. And like what I believe, uh, a council, uh, council member, uh, Tata was saying, the 1.8 million dollars listed projects are still going to be budgeted, still be approved and still, you know, full speed ahead during next fiscal year. So there will be a difference in the cap and non recurring revenue side of the budget. Just for clarification. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Morganstein, did you want to speak or you're content with your comment in the chat bar?
Um, well, I, yeah, I can say my comment. I, I am okay with doing this. Um, exactly what Christina is saying. People are out of work this year. We know people need the zero taxes this year. We should be doing our zero taxes this year. I, I, I'm all in. Thank you.
Counselor Zandry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I wanted to jump back in really quick, you know, on, on a couple of comments that got made and I will first, before I do that, I want to underscore all the work and the thought process that's gone into this. Um, from Counselor Shertel and Counselor Tata and everybody else who's worked on this because it's no easy task. And, and we sat on all these different calls, went through all these different budgets and we outlined, we outlined all the different departments and, and, and there were quite a few that said, if they had to take a guess, they were trending towards having money left over. And that's the key thing that I want to put on because we're, we're always talking about the doom and the gloom and the rainy day and, and I could go on for hours about that, but it's true that if you take your operating expenses and utilize, I don't care what you want to call it, found money, leftover money, surplus money, windfall money, we got all the, you know, we're expecting to collect 92% of the taxes and we ended up with 98% of the taxes collected. So we, we met more of our numbers and we've got all this extra money. I want to make sure that everybody understands a couple of things very clearly. The first thing is there is 26.1 million dollars in the general fund balance. A bunch of it is allocated to different things and there's very little of it that is unallocated. When you talk about your own net worth at home, you, you include the $2,000 that's sitting in your checkbook that keeps you from getting a $10 service charge every month. You don't leave that out and say, oh, that's not really part of my net worth. I have to leave that there or I'll get a $10 service fee in my checking account. When you total out your net worth, you add up everything quote unquote laying around. There's 26.1 million dollars in that general fund. It's allocated for a bunch of stuff and I want to make sure I got the right line. 6.2 was designated for the current budget we're in. We are likely not going to spend that. We will likely put it back. We'll probably put more back. All of that money is in a general fund balance because it was taxed from the taxpayers of this town. Additionally, there are times, and we are sitting in the middle of them, when you kind of push things forward. Do I want to have a worst tax increase in some future year? Because we, we hedged a little bit in this year. The answer is no, not if we can avoid it. And it sounds like there's a lot of capability for avoidance here. It may never come to pass. But we're doing that right now. If we are letting people right now, because of state mandates and state orders, but it's, it's happening, they don't have to pay their electric bill for the next three months without penalty. When it ends in September or whatever that month is, August, they have to pay it in full or they start getting hit with late fees at that point unless it gets extended. Same is true for their tax bills. If, if there's, if people are sitting on the cash, they've got an extra 90 days to pay it. Now, th- these are not people that are escrowing their taxes. That is still being escrowed. People that, that don't do it and pay it separately, they have the ability to wait until August if they want to do it. Or September, I forget the dates now. The idea is all you're doing is taking the bill and pushing it forward. And what are you pushing it forward for? When times might be better, or at least it gives you a chance to catch your breath. And that is what we're all trying to do here. Make it zero reasonably, logically, as responsibly as we possibly can. So that maybe next year, if instead of it being a 2.94% increase, it ends up being a 4.1, something that none of us want, maybe the people can absorb it a little bit better as a one-shot deal. We're not talking about going back to this well continually. We are talking about utilizing tax dollars already collected out of the taxpayers of the town to put it towards this one tax bill to keep it from being an added expenditure this year during the worst possible crisis there's ever been in my lifetime. That's what I think we're trying to do here and I hope that we all can see through all of the different possibilities that that's what we're all really trying to accomplish here. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Shertel.
I just had a comment that's kind of, I don't want to say it's out of left field, but in reaction to some of the other comments, uh, one of the reasons that I looked at the cap and non was be, and not at the general fund. Everyone's saying we're going to put all this money back in the general fund this year. I, I guess we'll find out. We don't really know. My, I, I think we are on the health insurance side, but I also know that our health fund is uh, about 50, at 50% of where it needs to be. So the health fund is a separate fund from the general fund. The health fund is a special fund. I think it's on page, I don't know what pages is in the budget or if it might even be in the budget. It's in the CAFR. The health fund by ordinance needs to be at a certain level. It's a percentage of, of our claims, expected paid claims. Uh, right now it's about 2.6 million. It needs to be over five, like five, one, around there. So whatever save, just as a comment, whatever savings we get this year really needs to go into the, a lot of it or needs to go into the, the health fund. So, and I believe that, uh, in the workshop, Mr. Hut and Mr. Bose said as much, they, they validated that. And in fact, part of the plan was to also hopefully incorporate some savings next year to help get that health fund where it needs to be. So I just wanted to add that comment when it comes to talk about, you know, we're going to, that was why in this, when we were working on this spreadsheet and we all worked on it. And I know it's being called my spreadsheet, you know, it was a group, it was a group effort. It wasn't just me, but you know, that was one of the reasons why the, we tried to stay away from, from look, there's a, you know, looking at what was unspent this year as a, as a basis for anything. Uh, that's why we tried to look at history. Uh, the, where the books were closed for the, from the CAFRs from 16, 17, 18 and 19. But I just wanted to make that, that point on the health fund. Um, we're going to need that money. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mayor.
Yes, um, I, I just, and I understand the desire to have a zero tax in, I, I understand that. And everyone wants to be able to put that in a portfolio that was achieved. I, I do understand that. But it really doesn't fit with a business model. A business, if, if it receives trouble, they cut back on their service area. They reduce staff, they reduce whatever they're selling in order to meet whatever the financial or, or other issue that surfaces. We, we don't have as much in that latitude because we're a monopoly. We provide a certain range of services and no one else can do it, either by law or by practice. We're, we're it. So picking and choosing about what we're going to cut back on uh, and for how long is, is a very difficult and rightfully heartrending process. So when, when you look at it that way, so our, our over, by far the biggest overhead cost is personnel, it's salaries and benefits. We've added 16 additional people this year. Now, we've started paying them in, in June, but they, they're, they're now for the first year in our
In the 2020
overhead. We're not cutting back, we're adding to our overhead. And you have to keep that in mind when you're looking at what, what, that will mean an automatic increase for that across salary, across equipment, across benefits automatically. So I, I understand a goal of setting, trying to have a zero, but that don't look at it that this, this year, that 1820 budget is basically same as the 2021. It isn't. There are added costs in the 2021
16 new people.
That need to, need to be kept in mind. So for anyone to think, hearing this discussion, oh yeah, well, you have expenses this year, so tighten things up and, and it'll all be the same next year. It won't be the same because of those changes. Thank you.
Counselor Kestha.
Thank you. I, I didn't ask my question clearly because the answer was as I asked. So I didn't ask my answer question. I apologize for that. You answered my question and you confirmed what I was asking. So that's how I understand it. So thank you for that. I will make one point that I know the caution is always put out a certain way and uh, we use 800,000 dollars and money from capital expenses, so to speak. It's not like we won't have it next year. It's not a problem of where it's going to come from next year. We take it out of the general, extra money out of the general fund. It's not like, well, how are we going to replace it? I know the, 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 and this Counselor, uh, Chairman Servoni makes this point. The issue is next year, that chunk of expense has to be covered because it's going to recur. So, you know, and I understand that. That's, that's, that is the, um, the caution when you use money for recurring expenses. Non-recurring money for recurring expenses. Yeah, we found money. Great. It's not like we're not going to get the money again. It's not like, how are we going to pay for the roads next year? We keep getting the pilot money. We did blah, blah, we get, we get it. It's when we start next year's budget and we say we used a half a million dollars in found money on recurrence, next year, we're a half a million dollars in the hole when we start. And then we have to make that up because we can't keep going to the well for that half a million dollars. Can't believe I'm the one who's issuing that caution. I'm usually, the question's usually made to me. But that, that's the challenge and that, and I appreciate that. So I don't think it's, it's, it's really not going to be a matter of where it comes from. That's a matter of philosophy, the degree to how much do we use our savings. Um, it makes more sense to me to use in effect some capital and non-recurring leftover money that we didn't spend on projects instead of reallocating it to other projects. We can use that too, as long as we understand that we are moving it down the road, as Jason said. We will not raise taxes this year if we do this. But next year, when we begin the budget process, we have to start by making up that amount of money just to get us back to zero again. And then we go forward from there. And having understood it that way, and I'm, I'm still, I'm still in favor of taking this action. Thank you.
Counselor Fishbein, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chair, I just want to check in with Counselor Testa and ask if he understands, um, the appropriation with the pilot, um, because I think I do have a easier way of explaining it. Um, if that's okay initially.
Oh, I got it.
Okay.
I, I think, yeah, no, it was, it was, believe it or not, I, I, my question was all over the place, but I understand it. Thank you.
Okay, no problem. Um, so I guess a question for Janice, because I'm looking at some statutes here. Um, if Janice is still with us, um, the attorney's small. Who is the budget-making authority in, in the context of what we're doing?
I don't think Janice is still with us.
Okay. Attorney Farrell, do you, are you prepared to answer that?
Uh, while I ask the question, I'll see what I can do.
Who is, who is the budget-making authority as referenced?
Mr. Chairman. Bill Dickinson speaking. Uh, from what I understand in the statutes, the, the executive branch of government is the budget-making authority.
Okay, because I'm, I'm looking at the state statute and I mean, I'm, I'm willing to be corrected if I'm, if I'm wrong. It's 7 dash 359. It says the budget-making authorities apply to towns, cities and boroughs, whether consolidated or unconsolidated. Having boards of finance or other bodies charged with preparing a budget means the body, means the board of finance or such other body. So that, that wouldn't apply. As applied to towns, having no boards of finance means the board of selectmen. And I think that the council is akin to the board of selectmen. I just see no reference to, um, the executive branch. I, I understand the strong mayor system. I just, I've been wrestling with this term for most of the day because the power of cap and non appears to be a power to the budget-making authority that I'm trying to figure out here. Okay, moving forward from there. The Mr. Bose, um, in addition to the 1.2, we've been talking about a lot tonight. My understanding is about 3 million We've been talking about a lot tonight. My understanding, there's about three million in cap and non. That is unspent for reserve projects. Is, is that correct?
I'd have to go back and look. I don't have that with me right tonight.
Okay, of, outside of the one point two, because I'm looking at the charter. The charter says. Response to the cap and non, such appropriations shall be deemed to have been abandoned. If no expenditure from or encumbrance of the appropriation has been made within three years of its approval. Except as provided in the next paragraph, and the next paragraph talks about the mayor can come to the council and essentially appropriations enforced. Our project. Outside of the one point two million, do we have additional cash in cap and non? That would have lapsed based upon non-action?
I know we are gonna have some towards the end of this fiscal year, but I, again, I don't have that amount.
Okay, and then I'm looking at seven dash three sixty-three of the Connecticut general statutes, and it requires that the. The treasurer, which I would expect, Mr. Bose, you, this comptroller would be our treasurer. Shall annually make available information and data on the condition of such fund to the budget-making authority. And to the public, and such information and data may be made part of the annual report of the municipality. So, do we get, or does the public get that report on cap and non?
Well, the cap and non recurring is a bookkeeping fund, and we, we do monthly reports with that bookkeeping fund, just like every other one. I don't know about the public, but it's certainly available for the public.
Okay, it, it references the annual report.
I believe that probably means the annual audit, and of course, the cap and non is included in our annual audit. That's correct.
Okay, so that would, it's not a separate. Document, okay.
I believe so. I believe that's correct.
That clears me up on the questions that I had. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Shertel has a question.
I think it's more of a comment, two comments to Counselor Fishbein. I have the monthly report from April. It looks like there's two point six million of available budget. In cap and non, but that's, again, that's a project-by-project summary going back on all the projects, so. You know, as we covered in our workshop, some of those are waiting for state audits. It's, it's complicated. It's not, I think it's, it's not quite as easily. Explained, but that, that number is what I have. Yeah, I think, you know. One of my concerns with the thing that I just proposed three hours ago is on. Some of the spending cuts. Because. When we worked on this. I'm not concerned about the number, because the number, I think, is solid in a lot of these, the number is solid. We're, it's based on history, it's based on data. We looked, we looked back four years. What do these departments historically? Not spend. I, I, and we took, we took a piece of it. I feel good about the number. What I don't feel good about. Is necessarily where the fact that, now, okay, then we went into different lines. Because we didn't realize until, and it wasn't anyone's fault, I'm not blaming anyone, it was, we didn't realize till the last minute that we could not, to Vice Chair Laffin's point. We couldn't just say to Parks and Rec, cut twenty-two thousand five hundred. We have to tell them legally which lines to take that out of. I am fully confident. They don't, there is a, their average, you know, they're, they don't spend maybe fifty grand every year. So that's where that number came from. It's half of, it's, it's less than half of fifty grand. But I am not confident that it may be salaries seasonal and others where it should come from. That's my fear with, with these cuts. So. As we're talking, you know, I, we're focused a lot, as we should be, on the concept of taking. Extra money, using it for recurring. So that's a good discussion, and that's where we should be focused. But as this discussion has evolved, and, and, and people are, you know, saying, well, this is a great job, and thanks for all the research, and. It's like the cut number has become gospel, and as I'm looking at these, and I'm blaming myself for this, and I'm blaming, you know, just. How I went about it. I am just telling you honestly, I am confident in the aggregate numbers here. I am not confident. As, as Mr. Bose pointed out in the chat, you know, where I, we, we cut overtime for. You know, the, his department, and we cut overtime for Parks and Rec because we didn't realize until. Last minute that we couldn't just give that cut to Mr. Bose to make, or to Mr. Voltramitis to make. So. I do have concern, you know, I don't have concerns with cutting. No offense, Mary Heffernan, if you're listening, I have no concerns with cutting the Conservation Commission. I'm pretty, that one's pretty easy. But I do have concerns with some of these bigger ones, where we put the cut. So I'm just putting that out there. I'm not, I don't know that I have a solution. It's just a caution. That I think was echoed in the chat, at least on two of these items, these cut, these potential cuts. And I'm not trying to make this more complicated. I'm just trying to be fully transparent. That we spent a ton of time to come up with the number. I believe in the number. We did not spend a ton of time on the line item. So that's the part I'm. Questioning. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Counselors Andrew.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let, can someone just correct me if I'm wrong, because it kind of dovetails into Counselor Shertel's comments. They had to come up with a line to cut. So if they cut a line like overtime. And some other part of their budget can handle, don't they just come to us for a transfer? We want to remove. Funds from one line to another line because we got a bunch of overtime to pay? Isn't that the way we've done it? I guess I gotta ask Jim Bose that question?
I think it is, but Mr. Bose, you can confirm.
Yes, I can confirm that. And if I think.
Go ahead, go ahead, Jim. I'm sorry.
No, I, I, I'm sorry. Yeah, I was just gonna say that I, you know, I think if, if, and I'm pretty sure the nine of you are. Well, I know the nine of you are reasonable folks, and if a department came back to you and said, hey, look, you guys cut X. Can I transfer some money up there from another line item? I'm pretty sure, and, and like Mr. Shertel said, I, I did throw a couple of those things into the chat just to get them. Just to get them off my mind before I forgot them. But anyway, it, it's just a, I, I, I know you folks would probably be open. The department has to come back and say, hey, folks, we're, we got a little bit better experience here, but. You put me here during the lunchtime, and I get some of that back. And that's how it would have to be done. That's correct.
Well, it's like, with one caveat, just one, one caveat, if it's a large sum of money. You, we can't take from other departments prior to April first.
April one.
So, i- i- if small amounts of money, yeah, transfers can easily be handled, but otherwise you have to wait. And only other source then would be contingency.
Yeah, the charter, the charter, like many, many municipal charters contain clauses that state. If you're gonna transfer from one department to another during the fiscal year, you can't do it before a certain date. Our, and, and very, when you think about it too, there's some rationale between that clause, because. You folks now have had this budget since, what, April one? The mayor had it middle of March. The department started giving us their stuff in January. So it's like, are you gonna take six months of, of, of time and effort, and then on day one, start shifting costs among all departments? It kind of elittles the whole process. That's why I think it's in a lot of charters. But anyway, yeah, the mayor is quite correct. For example, if I needed money in overtime and some money in, in, in personnel or something like that, we, I can't, we cannot transfer per charter. From one department to another until April. We can, however, come to you folks and ask for a transfer within the department. And that's. My, that's what I was referring to in my answer to Andrew's question just a moment or so ago.
Yeah, and, and, and the reason that I asked it, and I wanted it quantified, is I maybe wanna put, first off, all of my, my peers at ease here. So that they understand that, we're not gonna be locking this down. It's not, if we do this, and there's some concerns about, maybe we didn't pick the best line, maybe we made a mistake here. This is, some of this is eleventh hour stuff, and I think all the departments understand that. I, I, I think that if they end up with cut budgets or changed line items that they were. Otherwise assuming for certain work or certain bills or certain projects, they, they all understand. That they can come back to us internally to their own budget and move the lines around. And that at a critical point, like, like that was just outlined in April, if we had to take from some, some department that had a lot of excess. And move it to a different, we could. So I don't want anybody to think about. Gee, you know, we, we didn't have a lot of time to be robust about nailing it to the perfect line item. As long as it's within, you know, much to Counselor Tada's entire mindset for this, the one percent. Her mindset was, can we do these one percents? And if we grab the wrong line item, the department will fix that on their own. And if, and if we have to do it, we could do it in April. So I want to put people's minds a little bit at ease on that. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, I have nothing left from the council, and I do see, I think there are two or three members of the public left on the meeting. Are there any comments from the public? All right, there being none, there is one motion on the table. Oh, Counselor Laffin.
Yeah, so there's one motion on the table. I'm wondering if everybody would support if I made a motion to divide the question separating the cuts. From the rest.
There's a motion. Is there a second on the motion? I'll second it. Any discussion on the motion to. Bifurcate the question. Counselor Tada.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, for me, I'm, I don't wanna do it that way. I don't, I can't see one, I would not support one part of this without the other. I mean, I'm not, I, I don't think I would support. The cuts without, without the revenue side. I, I don't, I don't, it wasn't really how we planned it. I know, for me, that doesn't work. I, I want the whole package. I think it works best as a whole package. With the revenues and the, and the savings. Thank you.
Counselor Fishbein? I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I mean, I agree, this, you know, there's been a lot of work, work put into this package, and it is. One whole package to get us to a goal that I've heard about for a few months now. So, you know, that's the way it was presented intentionally. And I think that's the appropriate way to deal with it. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Laffin?
Yeah, thanks. The, the first part isn't dependent on the second part, though. In the same way that the second part isn't dependent on the first either. If we did one half without the other, it would, it would ultimately affect the tax increase, right? And that's what everybody's goal here is. So, as an example, so I'm not comfortable with the entire package with the. Taking the eight hundred and twenty-eight thousand and, and whatever, not, not a big fan in this battle. How I vote in the war a week from now, I, I don't know, but I, but when it comes to the, the cuts, I, I think, I think they're responsible. I think. You know, yeah, we, we, we spent, everybody's looked, looked at them now, and we've all gone, not all, sorry. Some of us have gone through them before and kind of came to those numbers, and I think there was a methodology. That was good for those numbers. And, you know, and I, and kind of part of me, you know, wants to support the fiscal responsibility. Of, of making the cut. Balanced out with what I, I have questions, concerns about. On the responsibility side of, of labeling, how we label. Some of the other money on, on the, on the second half. And if everybody doesn't wanna do that, I, I guess that's, that's fine, but I, there is, there's literally no. There's no reason not to divide it, that, that I can see. You know, it was designed as a package. It's kind of, but they're not dependent on each other. A failure of one does not take away from the other. Actually, a, a failure for one reason would destroy the other. It sounds like tonight that, you know, if you wanna, you wanna go ahead because you feel like you have the majority votes as an entire package. I guess that's, that's your choice. But as far as it being designed, they, they were separate. And, you know, as a little background for, for other people in the user home, these, these cuts existed with a different pairing and package. In the second half, in an earlier iteration, that didn't work out. But the cuts, the cuts stayed. Maybe the cuts were fine-tuned. And the cuts were focused, and, and, and as Counselor Shertel has said, detailed with each line. But these cuts were part of another plan, and when the other half of the other plan didn't work out, these plans, this, this part of the plan. Kept going. So, that was my rationale in dividing the question. I don't see a reason not to do it, but if you, if the vote doesn't go that way, it doesn't go that way.
Counselor Tada?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I respectfully disagree. I see a huge reason to not divide it, because. If for some reason, and I don't see this happening, but if for some reason the revenue side half is, and the cuts don't, then didn't we just raise taxes? I think, I think that would be the effect of that. Like, why, why would we, why would we mess with the revenue if we're not gonna, if we're not gonna deal with the.
No, there's, there's still a reduction in the mayor's proposed budget if part of it passes and the other part doesn't.
For both, both sides of that. Both halves reduce the revenue, the needed tax increase.
Yeah, yeah, I see what you're saying. I. Right, okay.
And that's, that's how the first half survived into, from a previous plan.
Yeah, I see it.
That half is solid, I think.
I mean, I would, I wouldn't wanna see us, I wouldn't wanna see us pulling that, pulling the. I don't. I guess we can, I mean, I guess, I guess we can vote on it. For me, this isn't about like votes and who has the majority of votes. I think, I think the goal that many of us were. Were getting to was, was the zero. So doing half of it. I, I don't, I just don't see that really the. Much value in that, but thank you.
Well, it doesn't mean that you, you wouldn't support both towards your zero, but the failure of one wouldn't be dependent on the other.
Counselor Shertel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I don't really have a problem with what Vice Chair Laffin is proposing, because I think that. If you support both, you vote for both. It's that simple. If you don't, you vote for the one that you believe in, and I think that it allows. The council, they're, they're not, you know. Like Counselor, like Vice Chair Laffin said, I mean, I mean, this thing has evolved over, over weeks and weeks and weeks, and so I, I think there were sort of two pieces to it all along. There were three pieces at one point. So I think that. I don't think it puts it in jeopardy at all, and I think that the, again, it allows somebody like Vice Chair Laffin, who is. Not in favor of the cap and non, but, but it seems like would be in favor of the spending to articulate that and support that publicly. I, I don't, so I don't, you know, again, I don't think, I think that they both get us to the goal. And I think if this, let me put it this way, if this was gonna, if this is gonna fail as a package, and it's gonna fail separately. I mean, I don't think they're tied together, is my point. I don't see. I haven't heard one comment tonight that, that for or against this, which would be for or against it because the two things are linked. So I, I, I don't really have a problem with, with doing it separately. I share your reservations. I get why you're concerned, but I don't, I don't think it's a concern. I think people are gonna vote the way they're gonna vote, whether it's two votes or one vote. So. Anyway, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, if there's no further comment, then the current motion is to divide the question. Madam Clerk, can you call the roll on that, please?
Okay. Fishbein?
Hello?
Laffin?
Yeah, yes.
Maron?
No.
Organstein? No. Shertel?
Yes.
Yes.
Tada?
No.
Testa?
No.
Zandry?
No.
Chairman Savoni?
I vote yes, but the motion fails.
Yeah.
The next vote is on the motion on the table.
Okay, can we just get it in front of me?
Can you read it, Barbara?
Yes, yes, Gina, I will.
Thank you.
I'm just going to get a clean paper to take the vote. So the motion from councillor Chertel, seconded by councillor Tada, was to pass the package as presented. Okay?
Which is now on your screen.
Now on your screen. We've gone over it.
It's so long as all.
Here we go. Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
No.
Maron?
Yes.
Morganstein?
Yes.
Chertel?
Yes.
Tada?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Zandry?
Yes.
Chairman Savoni?
I vote no, but the motion passes.
If I may, would you please, either Mr. Chertel or, or Madam Town Clerk, get me a copy of that tomorrow? Email a copy to me.
I'll send it to you right now.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Benny.
I will send out the motions. What I do normally is I put a reconciliation sheet behind the motions to start with the mayor's budget and show the line items affected by the actions taken tonight by you folks to come up with the new numbers that are, will mirror what is on the spreadsheet that's being sent to me. When you do get that, please look it over. Make sure that everybody, you know, has the same understanding of it to make sure that you got it, that we got it right in those motions. If that's, that, that it worked right. And call me if you think there's anything weird or, you know, incorrect with it.
Jim, that will come to me to go to them, correct?
That's correct. I'll bring it down to you.
Thank you.
All right, are there any more motions on the budget? There being none, I will adjourn the meeting and stop the recording.
Mr. Chairman, may I just ask one, the most important question of the night? We need a little levity for our meeting here. The most important question of the night. Why does Craig Fishby need a haircut in the first place? Good night, I'm leaving this meeting. Get to you all laughing.
Yep. Good night.
This, this conference is no longer being recorded.